Okay, it is Tuesday, November 28, 2023. We'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes from reports received and filed?
Yeah, we have the Sheriff's September 2023 piece.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We got another meeting tomorrow for budget. We got a salary commission meeting. East Side Business Association, I think we have a meeting Friday. I haven't got a reminder yet. We may not have a December meeting. Friday's also downtown living windows. Jefferson City Parade Saturday. I think that's about it till next Tuesday.
I don't think I have anything in addition to what Eastern District Commissioner noted.
Yeah, I don't either unless we want to go up to the Jefferson City Tree Lighting down at Rotary Park on Thursday. And then Friday morning, the Lions Club rings the bell for Salvation Army, so I'll be down at Central Bank at 9:00 a.m. So everybody can drive by and just drop hundred-dollar bills into my kettle.
Can you play music or something instead of that bell?
I'll tell you what, by the time you're done ringing that, you're, yeah, it is. It's, anyway, that's, I think Orangeville Lions participates too.
Yeah, I think they have a little competition.
Yeah, we do. Okay. Any Commission comments? Bids and contracts, design agreement with Architects Alliance.
Do you have questions? MD and Chris are here.
Yes. Yes, they are.
We already talked about this before. This is just the agreement to do the design, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a standard AIA training.
We've seen this then. Or have we seen the whole thing?
I don't know if we saw the whole contract, but I thought we talked about the scope of the project and what they're going to do. And whether we agree on the finished product is, I don't think that's what we were talking about, but having them do the design and put up with us three arguing about it. Wouldn't be any fun otherwise, would I?
There's only one.
I saw you extremely happy to be in here, Chris.
There's, there's not three of us arguing about it. There's only one.
Takes two to tangle, right?
And so one of our local TV stations was really interested in this, so you might be getting a call from...
I'll make a motion to sign the AIA document B101-2017 with Architects Alliance.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of 20...
Easy.
Discussion of 2023-24 Prisoner Transportation Services.
We've been out the prisoner transportation services for the Sheriff's Department, and we received one bid from U.S. Corrections. The Sheriff's Department doesn't exceed the 12,000 within the 90-day period of services. U.S. Corrections is who they currently use and don't wish to award it to them again at this time, and we would revisit the bidding process again next year. So our recommendation right now is to reject it. All bids.
I don't really have any questions. I mean, if that's how you want to do it, then we'll do it that way. So I'll make a motion to reject the prisoner transportation bids.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Boy, we're just zipping right along. Okay, do we have any unfinished business? Okay. New business, accounts payable review?
I will ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
I've got one on there, so.
Oh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstayed.
Okay. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 11.
This is for $9,848.57. I'm going to round that up. We don't like pennies. This is for...
Make sure we let's do that start next year.
Yeah.
There's any in the budget this year already, so it doesn't matter.
This is for proceeds that we received on the ambulance that was wrecked, so I do need approval today.
Make a motion to approve Budget Adjustment Number 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this is what everybody's been waiting for.
Can we go in different order? Why don't you do the last two items?
Okay, well, we will do, we will do DNR, then we will do discussion of DNR grant opportunity for public works. And I had received this email, and I sent it on to Eric, and he's...
So something a little out of the ordinary that we came across. Thanks, Sam, for letting us know about this. So DNR is soliciting ideas for environmental improvement projects, and apparently there's some federal money upwards of $5 billion across the country, and they are putting together a grant application, and it would secure a portion of the money for Climate Pollution Reduction Grants program. And they're looking for project ideas to submit, and they'll compile a list, and then they'll send that application into the federal government to apply for those projects. And if, if, if successful, they would look for projects that would be ready to go by the fall of next year or shortly thereafter. And coincidentally, we had been looking at cost to add solar panels to the roof of our main facility. Matt did a project at his property earlier in the year, and after doing that, got an estimate to add panels at our facility, just, just to see what it would cost, just to be forward-thinking in that regard. And that is attached and was included in your packet. And they did basically just a study of what that would look like over the long term. Year one savings would be $6,410 in utility costs, and the system cost would be $240,000, $240,000. And as I understand it, there'd be some incentives with that to bring that net cost down to $144,000 with a payback period of 15 years. So the project form is due the end of the month, November 30, and it's just a form to fill out with listing the project, just to show interest. It doesn't lock us in to do a project. It just shows that we're interested, and this is what our project would be. And so I just wanted to get your all's feeling on whether we should submit for a project to add the panels. I would probably utilize this estimate that they gave us, and again, it's just an estimate. And we would want to list... You don't, you can list what our match percentage would be, and it could be no match required, you know, 100% of the funds through the grant program. So just wanted to get some feedback from the Commission on what direction they would like to go. Do, do we want to submit an idea? And if so, what percent match would we utilize, or just go for 100%?
Yeah, I think that's what I had asked you, but it, I, I think we'd be stupid not to submit an application. It doesn't cost us anything. And I was figuring you were going to go for a billion-dollar project, but, you know, this is okay. But no, I think, when there's money out there, and if we can, if we can utilize it, we're, I think, I think we need to.
I'm fine applying for it. I don't know a match percentage. I do have questions, you know, on actually physically putting it and where it would be done and stuff like that, so that can be, we can talk about that later on, too. I don't know what percentage you recommend, and I mean, I'd say anything's going to be better than nothing, but...
Well, I mean, sometimes if you're matching money, it looks more favorable from the granting administration, but with it being the federal government and DNR compiling a bunch, I don't really know that it matters too much.
Yeah.
I might say, let's go ahead and ask for 100%. I know we have other county capital needs coming. I know we have some, and I know there's others as well, so let's just go for 100%.
We'll go with that.
I'm okay with that. Was it, did you say it's a 15-year payback?
Yeah, and Matt might be able to explain the payback and how it works, but...
So basically, they look at your, a year's worth of energy costs that you're currently paying out. Based on what this would produce, that savings adds up. It takes about 15 years to recoup your costs of the total system. And then after that, it's just, I mean, they, they won't design it to completely come off of the grid for electricity, but it will. There is significant savings over the course of a year.
Okay, so, but if, but we, we have no skin in the game. It's, there is, we don't...
We're paying the electric bill now.
Right.
So.
So.
It's just a benefit to us.
Right.
Instead of, you know, say, $13,000 in the course of a year on electricity, we may only be paying $5,000 or $6,000. But that extra, that you're saving, that's where your benefit ratio comes back. You're projecting $6,410, year one savings.
Yeah.
And then probably per year, you know, even if you did a 10% match, you'd get that, you'd realize those savings in, you know, two-point-something years. So, I mean, it's, I think it's worth looking into, that's for sure. And then as far as the match, I didn't want to get crazy with the match, but...
Will you be visiting with the DNR as you do this, or you, we do it kind of blind and send it to them?
We just send it, and we wait to hear what they say about it.
And it's due November 30, so we, yeah, we need to get it to them.
It's, it's a pretty simple form, it looks like, to fill out. I'm not concerned about getting it done. I just, main thing is, do we want to do it? I hear yes. And then second would be match percentage. Do we want to put up some money in it, or just go for 100%?
I, I would think that a small match would, might move you a little further up the list, like a 10% match, but...
That's kind of what I was looking at, because that's a two-year payback.
Right.
Using their numbers, that $6,410 savings per year, then 10%, 10% would be of the net cost, right? The 144,000, so it would be $14,405, so.
If, if there's some tight-fisted judges on this, and they say, well, these guys don't want to put anything in it, so we'll move them over here, and we'll find somebody else that wants to actually do something, I, I'd encourage, my thought would be to do a 10% match.
I agree.
Okay.
It's a little different type of grant, not requiring any kind of match. It's different than any we've ever done really before, that I've sat in on it.
I get these emails all the time, and so I just send them out, you know, because I figure if we can... So this just popped up last week.
Yeah, very recently.
Yeah.
10% sounds good to us. We'll put it in at that, and they may come back and say, hey, we need a little more, or we got 100%.
Let us know.
So we'll see, see when we come, we'll get back and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Discussion on vacation hours maximum.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This was an issue that Debbie and I have been kind of talking about over the last few weeks, because the end of year, we have to look at who's going to lose time, who may donate it back to the pool or whatever. And then I was approached by a department head that is not going to be able to expend the over max hours on vacation, and so they had approached a Commissioner about getting an extension or being allowed to carry over more. And I'm going to be the bad guy in the room, I guess, because we have a very clear policy that says that the max to carry over is 240 hours. There are several factors that play into that, why that number is arrived at. But currently, we have one that's asking to be allowed to carry over more than the max. We have 44 county employees that are over the max that potentially will lose hours. So I ran some numbers yesterday. Out of those 44, no one has asked to be given any additional grace. Everybody that we know of is trying to figure out how to utilize at least some of those hours, or they are considering donating them to the pool, which the pool is for exceptional time off after FMLA and accrued hours are exhausted. So we have a pool approximately 8,000 hours, roughly, close to that, that over time has been donated. And if we have somebody that has a serious medical condition, it's very strict criteria. They exhaust all of their accrued time. They can petition or request that they be allowed to have hours out of the pool, up to 30 days' worth of work hours. So the pool is very important. That, that always plays in at the end of the year, because anything over max, we ask them to donate those hours to the pool. If not, they simply lose them. So it's money out the door for several employees, not just the one that asked. I have some information I can share with you. I know that, that there's some people in there that could lose potentially $3,000 in earnings, just in, in wage or vacation max that they will lose if they can't utilize it. The total cost, when I ran it yesterday, just for the 44 that are currently over the max, that we know if they don't use them are going to lose hours. Keeping in mind that we have two more pay periods that's going to play into this, so that 44 number is potentially going to go up. Those 44 people equate $51,000 in money that they're going to lose on, on vacation hours. So again, like I said, being the bad guy, one person out of the county, I think, is not enough for us to change the policy for. We've had the policy in place for three years. It was suggested that perhaps if we aren't considering upping the max or going beyond the max, approving carryover, additional carryover, that we pay it out. I don't see that $51,000-plus as feasible, because if we pay out one, we should pay out all of them. We just had a very big payout for people on holiday hours that they weren't going to be able to utilize for the year. So I know we, we've already done that for some people that weren't going to be able to use it, but that's kind of an extraordinary circumstance. It's not just that they were banking holiday and, and decided not to use it, wanted to be paid out for Christmas. Those are truly people that have been unable to utilize those holiday hours that they've worked. So I think it was last meeting, the meeting before you all approved payout, we did process that on the payroll that was just issued last week. Debbie, do you remember how much it was? It was a very large number.
We could tell. It was definitely higher.
Yeah, with taxes and employer obligation, it was, it was very large. So I'm asking that we do not increase the max on carryover unless you consider also paying out for somebody that might want to be paid out as opposed to carrying over. I would ask that we just stick to the policy that's in place, has been in place for three years, and encourage everybody to figure out how to use their time.
Definitely, that policy's been here since I've been here.
So a long time. So it was in the MACC handbook that was issued long before my arrival.
It's the same policy, stayed too.
Yeah, that's, this is why we put it on the agenda, because we do need, we're getting close to the end of the year, so.
I agree with our HR Director, staying with the policy, and the only nitty difference that I'd say is, nobody's losing any money over this. They're losing time off.
Correct.
So just to say that anybody loses money is inaccurate, unless we had a policy that we always pay this out, which we don't.
Right, yeah, you're right.
But having said that little nitty difference, I agree with staying with the policy.
It's a value, I guess, more than anything.
And it, actually, it'll, it'll encourage those folks to maybe contribute to the pool, which then usually gets used for a very good reason.
Yeah, we've only had a couple cases in the last year that have utilized the pool, but it was, it was, it was very important to the people that utilized it.
We've, I don't remember Larry. Has Larry come to us?
No.
Vincent, our, who runs the pool, doesn't he? Are we still?
Yes, he's, he chairs the pool committee right now.
Oh, okay. We did have one. I, okay. But I agree with the HR Director.
Yeah, I was going to keep the policy the same. We've had this policy since I've been here as well, and I know we've discussed it a couple other times, and I just, I don't see any reason to change it. If there are extenuating circumstances that happen down the road, we can deal with it then. But I didn't see anything at this time, so.
Okay, I have a list of names that I will share with the department heads that have people under them or elected officials that need to be aware of the hours. They may be losing as of now, so that maybe they can make arrangements to at least utilize part of them. If not, then we'll be approaching people that are over the max for contributing those hours to the pool before the end of the year.
And, and when you're, the reason you visit with elected officials, it's because the people that work for them. It's not for the elected official.
Correct, yes. Yeah. None of them in this equation are elected officials. It's just the elected officials that supervise some of these people.
Right.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, before Mark, we go to you. Our great IT Director has our new hire we brought all the way from Eugene, Missouri.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
So Devin Miller is a recent hire from, and he comes to us from Oracle slash Cerner, and from the zoo. So he's going to join our IT team. He's going to work a lot with law enforcement, and, but he'll still work across the county. So Devin, I would like you just to give a short little blurb about yourself and...
Maybe sing a song.
Do a dance.
You don't have to dance.
Well, I come from Eugene, just a small, smaller little town, but I enjoy being able to just spend time outside and have fun with close friends. But, yeah, I, I really enjoy some of the time I have here. Do have a question for you guys. If, I, I know that there's things around for IT groups, and we usually get the reported small issues, but just questions for you guys, if there's anything that especially I should focus on, or if there's anything that I could work on, is usually what I'm trying to focus, so.
You, you will be bothered most of the time by the presiding Commissioner, who is the most illiterate of the three of us when it comes to IT, so warning there.
But St. Brian always takes care of me, so, you know, just, just learn from him, and, and, you know, I was talking to you yesterday, I said, you know, you just stay here and retire from here. So we'll, we'll just, we'll keep you.
Yeah.
And it's a lot closer driving to Jefferson City than it was driving to Columbia, so.
I'm very excited to work here. I, whenever I spoke to Brian at the very start, I just kind of stumbled across the job position, but then I took a great interest in it, so I'm glad that, that interest is reciprocated.
Yeah, I think we're just glad to have you, and if, you know, you're bringing a, no offense, Brian, but a younger mind in here, so if there are things that you, if there are things that you see, different ideas.
It's out there on the web.
Throw it out there, take a look at it. Yeah, I had to do that to pick on myself, too, Brian, so. Because I'm probably the second-neatest up here, so.
And really, our system, after coming from Cerner, our system's much, much easier.
After saying that, Brian, can you get this hooked up to the internet for me?
Email's gone.
Is that why you unhooked my internet already? I'm going to need some help with that, too, before you leave. What was the new guy's name again?
Devin.
Devin, can I get your help here?
We're glad to have you. We really are. And I think you'll like it. We, all in all, we have pretty good people. You know, there's, there's one or two elected officials, but otherwise, we're just, we're all pussycats.
I'm right here, all right?
I'm listening.
Oh, that's right. You said he was going to do a lot with the sheriff. Okay.
George scares me.
We're, we're glad to have you. Welcome.
Welcome.
Now, the moment everybody's been waiting for, the delivery of the auditor's proposed budget for 2024.
Okay. It's, it was, it was a very rushed project this year, of course, but I've got a document that I presented all the department heads, and there may be some, I know of at least one error in it I found initially, but of course, we're going to be having our budget hearings next couple days, and we'll be going through each of the, every department's, and if we find some other errors, it wouldn't surprise me. But, but I want to thank all the department heads and elected officials for helping me, helping us through this. I know there was a lot of, a lot of pressure to get it done in a short period of time, but we're here. We're pretty much on schedule now with budget hearings. It's similar calendar as last year, so, so we're, we're going to get there. Just a few highlights. I won't spend a lot of time, since we're going to go into budget hearings, but I, I would, I would think I'd define the county's financial position as very healthy, but cautious about future growth. Revenues, of course, sales tax in particular just really took off during, during the pandemic, and, but it's, we've seen it really slow down this year, so I am in, pretty much in general, I'm predicting about a 2.5% growth in, like, most of our larger tax revenues, property tax, sales tax, use tax, so, which may be conservative, I hope, but, but I think we're, yeah, we're still facing some uncertain economic times in future, I believe, so, so I wanted to stay fairly cautious. One thing that's helped is the interest rates. A lot of the money we invested really gone up significantly, so we've seen a lot higher revenue in our interest, our investments. And we expect the interest rates will stay, stay about the same or fairly high during 2024. On the expenditure side, we're looking at an increase of about, at least for now, in, in my budget, of about $1 million from last year, and that is pretty much all due to increased salaries, personal service, higher costs this next year, benefits, health insurance is going up some, and, but we're still pretty much within, pretty much all the budgets, or the projected operating expenses for the year will be within the new gener, new revenue that will be generated next year, for the most part. So that looks good. We do have, of course, we're still carrying forward a healthy, very healthy amount of reserves from previous years. Part of that is ARPA money. As you can see, we're, if you want to look at like my budget message on page IV, page four, it's kind of like an overall summary of the budget 2024 compared to 2023, projecting total revenue of about $61 million, and our beginning reserve is $54 million. So that is, you know, that is really high compared to our, our projected revenues. About $10 million of that is still ARPA money to be carried forward. Now, of course, with the ARPA money, we want to, we have to make sure all of that is appropriate, or...
Encumbered.
Encumbered by the end of 2024. And then it all has to be spent out the door by the end of 2026, so you're familiar with that timetable, but I just wanted to reinforce that, that we, we've got to get all our ARPA money totally encumbered and all the projects on the books by the end of, end of next year. And then we're also carrying forward a healthy balance in the general fund. That's been accruing over time. balance in the general fund. That's been accruing over time. I know there's a lot of, there's, there's needs, there's capital needs for the county, but a lot of that's been slowed down or put on hold during, since the pandemic hit, but I think, I think some of those projects are starting to crank up and get going, so, so next year, it seems to be, there's, we'll probably spend down some, a fair amount of that reserves. But, one last thing, just back to personal service, I just want to make my pitch again for a salary study. It's still very hard to budget salaries when there's very little I've got to go, that I have to go by on paper as far as, you know, any kind of salary ranges for, for classes of employees. So, I will again put my pitch in to the commission to, to conduct the salary study in the future, to make that process easier. That's about it.
You're a minute over.
At 8:30, yes. Unless you have any questions to start with?
Just a quick one, Mark. You have, on your first pass, put a COLA number in there?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Four percent across the board COLA is what I've got in, in these numbers, so.
And I do think you're maybe realistically cautious on the projected increase in sales tax at two and a half. I thought the numbers, did you release some numbers yesterday that showed maybe it's about four point four year-to-date for this?
Eleven months of...
Prior, yeah, so.
Then you can see if you look month-on-month, it changes quite a bit.
Right.
It goes down eight percent, or what, four hundred?
Are you, are you lumping the use tax in with that, or is that just sales tax only?
Obviously, our sheriffs is going down this year.
Well, yeah, the rate, your rate dropped an eighth percent.
Right, but we're still higher on our revenue total than what we thought we were gonna be, but we just didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, it started the year at 25% up, and we have a couple of low months and a couple of great big ones. There's no rhyme or reason why we've done about this every year, too. It's just hard to...
That just depends on department revenue and how...
I like your conservative objection.
Yeah, I do too. And use tax should be up, you know, with Cyber Monday and everything else, it should be, it should be gangbusters. So.
Oh, and real quick, Brian got to introduce his new employee. Let me introduce. I think some of you met Rob, Rob Ma, our new chief deputy. He started November 1st, so he's still learning. Because of the time crunch, I couldn't get him too involved in the budget process. I had to crank that out pretty quick, but I want Rob to sit in on all the budget hearings.
I like the tie. I think you should start wearing it.
I'm impressed with the tie as well.
I didn't mean to be saying...
I should be wearing a tie too. He's, anyway.
No bow tie, though.
No bow tie.
Okay, that, anything else? We're good. We will go right into...
We'll start with the budget hearings, and the first one is Pranger and Toby. Let's see, I think I wrote down the pages where...
Seventy-one.
So, seventy-one is where Pranger's budget starts. And I'll just, because this definitely affects your budget requests, but all I did is put in, as far as salaries, my recommended budget for you and all departments only includes current salaries plus four percent. So, I know you and some of the other departments are requesting, requesting more, different amounts, but that's, that's what I decided to, to go with, at least start with this year. So, in particular, I'm gonna pull up your salary request. Is that, you can go in whatever, whatever order you wanna go in, to just start with revenues, or how do you want me?
In review of the, the budget, what I recommended versus what was proposed, the only discrepancy, I believe, is in the salary line. Other than that, I feel comfortable with what I recommended and what was proposed. I believe those numbers match up, other than the salary line. The, I had had discussions with each of you with regard to what I was recommending, and then sent a lengthy email. Those salary adjustments are attached to the youth specialist positions, and the operational supervisors, and then the hierarchy structure of that. These are high-risk positions. They are high turnover positions. They are subject to mandatory staffing regulations set forth by the Supreme Court, which then means we run into the mandatory overtime. But given the salary base, then requiring mandatory overtime, they are either gonna have to be a college student or a retired entity, and it makes filling those positions particularly challenging. I had requested a budget increase to the same population last year, and then I assigned all of the pool money to those same positions. So, what I'm asking for in the salaries, I believe there's a difference of about a hundred and one thousand based on what I requested and what the auditor proposed.
This doesn't mean I'm opposed to any...
Sure.
Additional increases. It's just, that's the...
I understand.
The method I went with this year because of the, mainly because of the time crunch.
Thank you, okay. I have asked for $76,000 from the Department of Health and Senior Services to offset that hundred and one thousand. We were supposed to have heard back from them on the 21st. I was in contact with them yesterday. They said their contracts are slow coming out, and they should be out by the end of the week. So, I don't know what the status of that 76,000 is, but that would then work back against that hundred and one thousand difference. What I'm asking is that the, the youth specialist position raise, beginning position would be 42,000, two years' experience would be 44, the operational supervisors would go to 52, the superintendent to 67, the program director to 65. Everyone in the hierarchy with that turnover rate is taxed by the lack of experience that works on that unit. This is 24/7, it's holidays, it's weekends, it's nights. It, it doesn't stop. And that's, that's everybody as it attaches to the unit. I'll remind you, the youth specialists work on the unit, so they're with the high-risk, high-needs youth. We've had three head injuries in five months this, this year. This is, there are so many variables that it is impossible to train, to know if somebody is going to get into the ceiling and the jaws of life are gonna have to be used, if they're gonna kick out a window in a transport. With so many variables, it's difficult then to have a standard training guide. So, all of the people in the hierarchy are consistently taxed by the presentation of these youth, of which the age has raised in the last couple of years. SERF does not attach to this, so that's four percent that does not attach to the juvenile office. I would note that DYS facilities start at 48,000. I think the jailers start at 50,000. These starting positions are less than those. We have less means by which to manage these youth. We have higher criteria for employment. We have to be 21. I believe the jailers have to be 18. At the time that our salary sheet was presented, six of our nine youth specialist positions were open full-time, and then our part-time, we had four of seven positions filled. And I don't believe that we've been above four of seven in the part-time for the last year or several years. So, the salary increases, it's all in the full-time salary line. Again, the difference between what I requested and what Mark proposed is 101, and then the hope would be that for at least the next year, we could offset that by the 76,000 from the Department of Health and Senior Services grant.
Toby, when we, you and I spoke earlier, you were kind of matching, hoping to match state salaries. Was that, did I get that right? When, you know, when you and I sat down, and it was a month ago, your salary schedule, you were, you're trying to match what these people leave you to go work for someone else at the state, what they would get there?
Yeah, so they, the places that we've lost would be to DYS, and they start at 48. We're asking to move them to 46 with no experience, and 48 with two years of experience. The other benefit, if we can bump somebody with experience to 48, that's what our deputy juvenile officers start at also. And if we could staff in detention with deputy juvenile officers, then that would also reduce the overtime for the on-call DJOs, and they are on-call, we have an on-call DJer 24/7.
If I may, Toby has submitted updated revised and current approved job descriptions for all of her positions. She's justified that in the description, the duties and the needs, and I have reached out to one of my major resources for salary comparisons. So far, the data that I'm getting is, is in line with what Toby is asking.
Do we have some way to do something kind of like we've done with Public Works, EMS, do Career Path and STEPS and stuff like that? I think that's been a, just a really good tool that we've used and done over the last couple of years, and they're done differently as well, so.
Yeah. As the new job descriptions come in, I'm reaching out to my major resource, and they do the salary comparisons for us on a free basis, just included in our, our membership and our annual cost. But of course, we could do a paid salary study that's gonna give us comparable information, but that's pretty expensive. So, as far as the career path, Eric said that he would work with me to, to help me get some of that, so that we could try to compare part of it.
We can use that same model, or, you know, different ways, if we can get them in here, and then have step raises in there while they're here. I mean, I hate the budget. Every year, I hate doing the budget, but I think this year's gonna be the, probably the, one of the toughest ones we've done. We've had COVID money, ARPA money, whatever you wanna call it. We've been able to spend a lot of money, and now we're gonna have to scale back and quit spending as much, and then salaries everywhere. If you wanna get somebody to work, and if you wanna retain good employees, we're gonna have to pay them. So, this is gonna be a very tough year for us. I'm not looking forward to it, and I understand your ask, Toby, and I, I gotta say, it's a very fair ask, so I'm hoping we can work something with it. So, it's just, it's gonna be a difficult year with the budget.
Can, Toby, can you say anything more about the ask of, is it HSS you said, or the 76? Can you drill down a little more on, maybe later this week, we know the response, or whenever?
They were supposed to have the proposed contracts out on November 21st. They didn't come. I spoke with them yesterday. They said that they changed some contract language, and they were hopeful that those contracts would be out by the end of this week.
And this is a one-year?
It's a one-year. It's COVID money for confinement facilities.
Did they give you any indication of chances?
They did not, but we submitted, we submitted our initial request, and then they sent back out that due to other entities not turning in their templates timely, there was extra money, and to ask for more if we needed more. So, we revised our template and resubmitted, but, but I have not heard anything from that.
Do your, your peers and other folks in the industry that you're in, the Adair, do you talk with them, or Boone, are they doing the same thing in terms?
I did not, I did not inquire. There was an email that went around through the juvenile offices about the confinement money, but when the process initiated, juvenile facilities were not listed as eligible. I called the contact person for that money and made inquiry, and they then went ahead and listed Pranger because it, it does qualify the juvenile facilities. What they indicated was that they were unaware of which juvenile facilities this money came out, and it was kind of a scramble to get everything put together, so they listed jails and, and adult facilities, but the juvenile should have been eligible, so they put Pranger on, and I don't know if other facilities, juvenile facilities did the same.
Remember, most of the juvenile facilities are state-run. It's only in a single county circuit, and Boone's a multi-county circuit, and I believe Adair's a multi-county circuit.
It is.
So, you have very few imperators to look at that, but, you know, but which I think explains kind of why they weren't looking at it in the very beginning.
And I get the salary study that Mark was proposing, because what we do for some departments then obviously affects other departments, so we need to have an overall view of all two.
But you're gonna hear from departments coming up that are feel that way, yeah.
I mean, it's really simple. We're running a jail. I mean, if you've been over there, you can see we're running a jail, and we're paying jailers $50,000, and Wheeler can't fill his staff. But we are really suffering, and then that's before we have all the other challenges that we have, which is, you know, 25% increase because of raise the age, and an extremely challenging cohort that's coming up. I mean, we've been watching this since they were 10, and they're...
I will say, I think in the last couple of years, you've addressed the sheriff's needs, you've addressed, I think, pretty much Public Works requests. EMS has a pretty stable salary schedule. It's working for them. It's probably one of the few of our somewhat larger departments that has not really been addressed, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, we've had some adjustments in there, but not any overhauls, that's for sure.
We did adjust, we adjusted the DJO salaries, and we have not had anybody leave since the adjustment, which I believe was a year and a half ago. Two years, our positions filled, and no one has left that unit since we adjusted those salaries, which was up from 35 to 48 to 55, and no one has left. And, and the unit is, I, I think we do good work, we do quality work, and that's on both sides of the House, but our positions turn with much more frequency on the, the actual living units.
One more thing I wanted to throw out. Overall, the county budget, the general fund is projected to be, the new revenues are projected to be close to a million dollars more than just current operating, budgeted operating expenses on county capital. So, my opinion, there's some, there's some money there, money available to address, address some of these salary concerns in, in the general fund.
Just the approach and how it's handled, yes. County one?
Any other questions, comments, questions on salaries? I'd agree every, I think I went with, I agree with your numbers on every, pretty much every other line item, so we're in agreement. Normally, I'm gonna ask too about capital, the capital budget for, especially the larger departments. We're, we're not putting any new capital requests for the current Pranger Center in our 806 budget, our 15% sales tax budget because of the ongoing, whatever, planning for, for building a new facility, unless there's something you came up that you think you really need to address.
I did not submit any, but I knew that Greg had submitted a handful of requests.
Yeah, I did not include those...
Okay.
Currently in, in that budget, in the budget, so.
I know currently, we're, we're building only, only the back half. I know currently our, our building, only, only the back half of it has heat, which is an ongoing issue. The front offices are without heat. I believe that the living quarters for the kids have heat, and we have some space heaters running, but that is an ongoing problem. But no, I did not put any capital investment requests in.
So.
Greg's got some requests.
I'm sorry?
He should be here.
Well, he, he had a li, he has a list, and I, I talked to both Toby and Greg before I put this together, that how much of that, is there any of that that is critical, that must be addressed right now? And you both said no, from that, that list that Greg, Greg has this kind of long list that doesn't change a whole lot over time, changes some, but yeah. But based on talking to you and Greg both, I decided not to put any of that currently in the budget.
So the, the heat thing on the front of the building, is that just something temporary? Right now, they're waiting on parts or what? I thought we took care of this.
Every year, we take care of it every year. And every year, when it's time for, to run the heat again, there's an issue. I have not spoke with Greg to know what, what the status of that is.
Okay, let me figure something out on that, because the space heaters are, number one, are dangerous. Number two, they're very costly, and so we need to figure out what's going on over there. I, it probably does come up every year, so it's probably taken, taken care of every year, so.
Yeah, we will try to give you heat.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
We will give you heat.
Other thing I can think of, is this the time and place to talk about the new project? Or wait?
Well, along those lines, we have a trip planned. Is that right?
We do. On December thirteenth, we're going to travel with Architects Alliance to Joplin to look at their floor plan and meet with the architect who designed that facility. We had discussed Kansas City as well, and there, I think, is still a potential for us to see the, the two facilities, same architect in Kansas City, Kansas.
And so the facility that we view in Joplin, did, was it the folks that they're subbing with?
Yes, Trainer. I believe it's Trainer, and his name is Andrew.
Was he at the meeting that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right. They're, they kind of picked that one out.
Yes.
For us, it's new, it's got some similarities to what we want to do. And as you know, we have to encumber this if we're using ARPA money by the end. So it's time to, to get a little closer to allocating dollars.
Engineering cost is coming out of capital sales types, so we're still planning on construction coming out of ARPA, but maybe at the beginning, we have to have an encumber contract line.
And we may only be hours or days away from acquiring the property. Is that right? I mean, Jill stepped out, but I know the Cole County abstract is very close to inviting us over for the closing. Okay. So at this point, we, we have a placeholder here, right, so to speak, for your number? But the decision, the up-down, or we make it at the next meeting?
Usually, that's how it works.
Okay.
Yeah, for, for things from thirteen, twelve.
It'll be now the fourteenth and fifteenth.
Yes.
Budget workshops. I will, we will do our best to notify you when your budget comes up for discussion in, in those two days, so.
Perfect. Okay.
We're going to do that for everybody. I mean, I saw that, I think, in order, because when we started making changes, a lot of times what we did is, we had them make a presentation, and then we started tearing through it, and a lot of times, they weren't here and didn't know about their changes until they were emailed to them. By that time, it's almost too late to go back and make another change, so.
I think a lot of times, we do have that office or department sitting.
Not historically, we have not. They can be listening in on the meeting, which is interesting enough, but if they don't fall asleep and they hear their name come up, then they can come up here and argue to not have something cut or changed. So I think it's only fair to have them here when we're, we have their departments.
But as we look at, as we look at the juvenile center budget, the general fund, we are only looking at one line that disagrees from.
Correct.
Budget officer to.
Well, yeah, one line, or the whole personal services, because.
Okay, that, that gets tweaked.
You know, social security loggers, that's based on different numbers, higher number the department requested, a little bit lower.
So those would drift up if we went with Toby's numbers, right?
So yeah, a hundred thousand, but in reality, it'd be a little more than that difference.
Probably just the payroll tax difference, wouldn't it?
What's that?
Just the payroll tax differences about.
Loggers and social security, yeah, health, health benefits should, in fact.
Health benefits wouldn't change.
No. In fact, I'm projecting higher than you requested, just because, well, those numbers were coming in at the end.
Sure.
I think a lot of those estimate, department estimates were based on a little bit lower health insurance costs, so.
That's what gives you the dependence to the downtown.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we're four minutes ahead of schedule. Eric.
Take a little break after.
Yeah, I think, yeah, please. We're Public Works, Planning, Parks and Rec. Sales. Thank you, sir. Yeah, what page? Mark.
Several pages, depends on how you're.
I will start with, I'll just go in order of the numbers. Parks and Recreation will be the first one, fifty-one.
Okay, that's fifty-one.
Okay.
What page is that? No, that's planning.
Fifty-one.
No, that's planning. Fifty-eight, maybe? Eighty-eight.
Start eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Before I get into that, just a few things to highlight. In twenty-three, we continue to work hard on our payment management program. That was very evident in the money that we spent on our overlay program, prepping payments for overlays, our concrete repair services. We've done a lot in that, you know, the past two to three years, and you'll see where that going forward. Completion of the cart, I mean, that was a monumental project. We discussed that a lot. That was very successful, and that will be completed. Actually, they're probably almost done, so.
Railworks will be gone by tomorrow.
Yeah, so that, that project's been very successful. Implementation of central maintenance has been long talked about, and you finally got that implemented in twenty-three, and look for big things to happen in that area. Upgrading the fueling, fueling system was another major task, very logistical nightmare in some regards, that our, our central maintenance department handled. We've been very successful with grant funding, securing grants. That should be add a lot to Matt and his department, looking for those, especially on the MODAT and the federal side, federal highway side, but then we've had others too. So done a lot in that area. We've completed some large road and bridge capital improvements. Less road, we had not done, and gravel road upgraded sometime, and we completed that one this year, and we actually designed that in-house, as opposed to having a consultant design it for us. Major street reconstruction in Northport subdivision, and then a lot of concrete street repairs we've been doing. We got the county park parking lot under contract, another major hurdle overcome this year. That'd been on the list for several years, with our Parks Committee had requested it, and so we were able to achieve that. And then, one big item, and it'd been around, unfortunately, sixteen years, and that was the Wildwood Drive Extension Project, and we finally got that to final design and taking it to construction next year, and that is in agreement with the city of Jefferson. So another major thing completed in this year. Looking forward to next year, we're going to continue to invest in our employees, our training program tied to the Career Path Progression Plan. We utilize LTAP, their scholars' program. Most, if not all, of our maintenance personnel achieve level one, and that's a step in their progression. So we, we got to level one scholars with them. There's level two and three. Additionally, other programs supported by APWA and MACTO that we take advantage of, and then training programs for mechanics. And the Career Path gives us something for employees to look forward to. I know the salary study was mentioned earlier. I would echo that. I think that would be helpful. One thing, our starting pay for our entry-level equipment operators is thirty-two thousand dollars in comparison to where MODAT is on a very similar position there, about forty thousand. We do need to look at upping the starting pay consistent with the COLA that would happen for next year. And I would like to work with Sheila and look at the whole Career Path and make sure the salaries are appropriate compared to what COLAs have been. So we'll just work with her over in the course of next year. First thing would be the starting pay. Now, we don't have any open positions right now, but if the time comes, we need to make sure that that's appropriate. So that would be, you know, investing in our employees and being able to retain, recruit and retain good employees is key. Open Gov, permitting and licensing, of course, we signed an agreement with them to move forward with that. I look for big things to happen in that area. That's going to completely transform our permitting and planning departments, and will help implement new ideas going forward. We're continuing to invest in our equipment. We have several trucks coming in this year, dump trucks. They were pre-ordered a year and a half ago. You know, that's just the nature of, of that business, having to preorder things well in advance to make sure we can get them, so there'd be those coming in, and then other items as well. I'll talk about those later. We got a big list of capital improvement projects that Matt's been working on. Beginning the rail translating operations at the cart, that's going to be a big one to see how that unfolds. As you know, we got an MOU with capital logistics to, to finish out at the end of the year, and to get things set for taking that to operating next year. We'll have an operating agreement with them early next year. We'll be talking about that in the near future. We've had some personnel changes in some key positions. We have a new road superintendent going into next year or right now, but, you know, look for things there next year. And then our longtime surveyor is retiring this, or in December. So that'll be a significant change for the engineering department. We've already hired his replacement. A new engineering technician came on full-time earlier this year, and we'll talk a little bit about that related to salaries later on. And then seeing central maintenance growth happen, we will request the purchase of a oil-burning furnace, entire changer and balancer for that department, and then also look at future expansion of the shop to add capacity. We'll discuss that in a little bit. And then some long-range planning, we still are looking at, you know, long range, what a new public works facility would look like, trying to get some feedback from similar agencies. We've toured different departments around the area and looked to see, you know, where that fits in with the overall county budget. We know it's not going to be immediate, but we need to be planning for the future. Part of that process, part of that first phase of that process is to add on to the central maintenance shop and get them set for, you know, going forward. And then when we move on to a new building, they would take over that whole building. So looking at getting into the different budgets, we'll start with Parks and Recreation. There really wasn't a whole lot, really with any of the budgets, that the auditor changed, that we would request different. But we do have a few items, and we'll highlight those. Also highlight some of the bigger ticket items that are different this year from previous year, or previous years, and explain why that is happening. But again, for the most part, the auditor didn't change a whole lot. So we don't really have a whole lot to discuss regarding things that we would want to do different than what Mark had done. So in the, on the Parks and Recreation side, under five-three-two-nine-nine, vehicle and equipment operation, the budget we submitted was seven thousand dollars. We would like to increase that to ten thousand dollars. And the reason is, we're tracking right now to be about two thousand over our original budget from twenty-two, or twenty-three, I'm sorry, and that would be sixty-five hundred. So we're tracking about eighty-five hundred, and we think we probably need to be closer around ten. And so that accounts for all gas, fuel usage, diesel, also all equipment, fuel usage, and repairs and maintenance of equipment. So we would request that to go to ten. And that's the only change on the Parks and Recreation side. Any questions about that?
Nope.
Let's go to planning, one-seventy-three, and then the book. Nothing that we would want to change there. I do want to point out that under four-three-two-seven-one permits, and that would be revenues, from permitting. Yeah, so we got eighty-five thousand dollars estimated for revenues coming in for permits. Two things that could make that change next year to be watching and look for, the permit fee restructure, we've discussed this, so probably the last year and a half, our permit fee is based on a formula, complicated formula, and using cost data from two thousand and three, construction cost added from two thousand and three. So it's way outdated. We need to update that. We want to go to a square footage basis, so just a very simple calculator based on livable square footage, or living, living area in a home. So it'd be very simple to submit, and this ties into Open Gov as well. When we do a permit, you just submit what your square footage of livable space is in your new home or addition to your house, and that, the cost will be based on that. With that, and we've looked at several different options of how that would work, but most likely, it would be a, a set base fee up to a thousand square foot of a hundred and fifty dollars. And I don't have that listed in the document. I'm just discussing it right now. So it's a base fee of one hundred and fifty dollars for the first one thousand square feet, and then after that, it'd be thirty cents per square foot above that one thousand square feet. And so right now, a two thousand square foot, based on that cost calculator, a two thousand square foot home would be four hundred and fifty dollars for a permit. Currently, they're all over the board. It's based on what the permitee gives you for their estimated cost, and it goes into that formula. So I've tracked this the past year and a half, and using that formula, it would be roughly a twenty percent increase in permit fees. So we can look at all different ones. That seemed to be the most applicable, and Mark and Pat also recommended something like that. It's easier to calculate. Somebody knows pretty easy, you know, what their fee's going to be when they apply for it. Going to Open Gov and doing it online, it'd be very easy for somebody to do. We should have been increasing as time went on and not utilizing the old data, but the fact of the matter is, we weren't. And so we need to start somewhere. This seems to be the most appropriate. I think it probably still is less than what you might find from areas around. You got questions?
No, Harry's good.
Well, and so this, the calculation that we're currently using has been used for almost twenty years?
Twenty years.
Okay.
Now, if not longer, it's just based on cost from two thousand and three?
I think, I think it probably needs to be.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get too crazy with it. I don't think it's fair to the citizens. And another thing, another thing that kind of where we go to the square foot basis and not a cost basis is, and this came in about a year ago, somebody was building a pretty large house, and, you know, the cost was. large house, and, you know, the cost was for everything, and at the time, you know, construction costs were very high, and the permit was coming in like ten thousand dollars. And we're like, you can't charge that much for a permit, you know? And then, because it's not, we're not gonna spend that much employee time doing the work. We need to be more, it needs to be more in line with what we're actually doing. So, we did a little figuring on that one to bring it down, and it was still pretty high, but, you know, with, with cost, you know, going up and down, if you're basing it on a current construction cost factor, it really, it doesn't match with what your employee time is. And the basis that we're using is, and this is our permit inspector said, about a hundred and fifty dollars equated to employee time would be what it would be to do a thousand square foot home. And so, just trying to keep it very reasonable.
So, we call it a permit fee, but in actuality, it's an inspection fee. Is that right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And administer, you know, you get administered and all that.
Oh, I understand, but, but for, if somebody says, well, what do I get for, for the permit fee? What do I get out of you? Well, you get an inspection.
And ultimately, an occupancy permit as well.
Right.
And some lending institutions require some, don't, but that would be generated.
I don't wanna get way down in the weeds, but I can pay somebody else to inspect it if you want me to. So, I mean, it's, it is another tax. I mean, it's, we're gonna, it's part of making sure, though, that we have quality building being done and assuring that, not necessarily the person that's building it, but the person that's gonna buy it, because there's other counties that don't have anything like that, and it's buyer beware. So, I mean, just trying to keep it reasonable. I think y'all have done a great job of doing that.
And then, yeah, Jeff, the main thing is, we wanna be reasonable. We don't wanna be overbearing, and we don't wanna be over costing somebody, you know, just keep it in line with what our employee time is. So, and then, with Open Gov implementation, generally, they've told us, expect a little more compliance with getting permits, and that could end up in some extra revenue coming in. So, we'll just track that, and you'll see this permit fee restructure on the commission agenda in the near future. We would like to have it ready to go first of the year, but Shannon's working with Jill as far as statute requirements, as far, you know, we need a new hearing. Sure, definitely present it at one commission meeting and give it a week before we approve it. So, look for that in the next few weeks.
I think after twenty years, I think it probably is, deserves to be.
And then, you know, we'll just, you know, we'll track it and just, you know, watch to make sure it's, it's keeping up with what our employee time is. Again, I didn't have anything to change of what Mark had recommended, other than, we'll just watch that. We, we are pretty conservative with that estimated revenue coming in, you know, probably a bit higher. Let's go to Road and Bridge, the 211 account. Again, didn't have a whole lot different from what Mark had recommended, but we'll go, yeah, numbers. Well, I'll go through, again, some of the, some of the highlights, and then just a very few number of things that we would look to change. Our estimated revenues, the main, or the two are the property tax and CART, County Road Trust, and with the, the gas tax increase, we're seeing an additional about a hundred thousand a year coming in for that, plus just general growth. So, that's estimated about thirteen point one percent for next year. Property tax, we got about two point four percent for next year. Central vehicle maintenance, this is a newer line item in the budget, and we've estimated reimbursement coming in from other departments at about fifty thousand dollars. And again, this is a new one to track, so, you know, it's just kind of a ballpark number of what we're seeing based on what was tracking up to the point that we submitted the budget. Fueling reimbursement, that's gonna be a little more just in general increase in fuel costs. Now, we do use the United States Department of Energy for a cost to budget on, and that's back in August of when we, we did that.
We did update that to November once we updated.
Yeah, so that was updated, but it's still showing an increase for next year. And over time, that's been pretty accurate, so that will be a little bit more. And then, uh...
We were a little behind on those buildings.
We had, we, I think there were some submitted, we had the downtime, of course, of two months, but those were submitted.
I think so.
Recent, yeah.
The other thing on that is, we used our numbers from 2022 as far as gallons that we, we base our numbers off of, so that this number could actually change, especially having the fuel system down three months out of the year this year, so.
When we changed over and put the new pumps in, we weren't fueling at our facility, so we, the 2023 numbers are not gonna be very, very accurate to budget off of, so we use the 2022 numbers. You got it? So, on the appropriation side, salaries, 51001. We do have some changes, as I mentioned earlier, with a resignation and two promotions, and then a retirement coming. And so, our budget amount that we calculated would actually go down by seventy-six thousand and some change in that line item. It would decrease to two million, seven thousand, three seventy-three. I had talked to Mark about that previously, and we knew we were gonna be making some changes with that and didn't want to try to speculate what it was gonna be when he submitted the, or did the book. So, we know we'll adjust that at the very end, and that'll have other change, that'll change the social security insurance retirement, all the other line items as well. So, on the part-time side, we would ask to increase that by twenty-five thousand dollars, increase it to fifty-nine thousand from thirty-four thousand. So, our retiring land surveyor is planning to come back and work some part-time, probably not a thousand hours, so we're estimating, I believe I had, seven hundred and fifty hours, and so, we would like to add twenty-five thousand in the part-time line item for that. And we expect him to, to work part-time for a couple more years, especially help train his replacement over time, so. And then, there's a line item, and I didn't see any funds in there, but a salary reserve. Was curious what the plans were for next year on that, if that's, would be the commission, obviously.
Early up in the air, yeah, as far as.
I think that might be one of the things we address at the end, and see what we have that we.
Yeah, that just, that just happened.
That's just my idea on it. A lot of times, we did that with the salary increases, but we're doing a little different now, putting that in from the get-go.
I thought it was helpful to have it, and so, I'd make a pitch to have that, and just whatever percentage is reasonable, and I could be here later in the month, you know, to write some feedback on it.
I would, I would agree. I think that it helped on a couple of retention.
Well, last year, that ended up being was the difference between what was requested versus what was approved, so the difference was put into missing reserve for future requests that would come up during the year or salary adjustments.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see that being the same calculation this time, but, you know.
Yeah, I think a little closer this year than last year.
Perhaps there's something that could be put in there for, for that, and I think it was, it was helpful to have it. Leased equipment, we do have an increase, and these aren't things that we're asking to increase or decrease from the auditor's recommendation, but these are just some things to highlight that are maybe more substantially different from, from the current year. Leased equipment, that did increase by six thousand, six hundred dollars, and that's due to just price increases for primarily the rubber tire loader that we use during the winter, and then other, other needs. Our tool and shop supplies, that's 53295. We would like to increase that to, or we requested an increase to thirty-seven thousand from fifteen thousand, and that would be to purchase the tire changer and balancer for the shop. And that would be a one-time increase. We would bring that back down to the normal level next year. 53296.016, paint and beads, we piggyback off the state contract for that, and there's been price increases there, so that went to eighty thousand from sixty thousand. 53299.001, fuel, that's an increase just due to the estimated increase in fuel costs, like I mentioned earlier. We're decreasing 53299.006 repairs to fifty thousand from sixty-five thousand and twenty-three, and this budget used to be very high because we used to ship a lot of our repairs out, major overhauls, engines, transmission, everything. We do almost all of that in-house, but we still have some repairs that have to go out just due to specific requirements of what it is and maybe manufacturer requirements or whatnot. So, there's some things that still have to go out, but we, we don't feel we need that amount of money that's been in the past, and we'll continue to look at that and bring that down to a realistic amount. 53848.002 asphalt, this is probably the biggest change from previous years. It was originally budgeted in twenty-three at a hundred thousand dollars. We did our amendments to the budget, I think, two, and up to, and I don't have the number in front of me, but.
Two forty-nine thousand.
Two forty-nine thousand. We're requesting the budget be two hundred and thirty thousand this year. Asphalt prices have increased dramatically, that's one reason. Another reason is, our crews are doing a lot more work, pavement preservation work, preparation for overlays, and also just general, just general maintenance of, of pavements over the, over the course of the year. So, this number does need to keep, maybe it doesn't need to go up as much as it did this year, but we need to be watching this to make sure, and we, we have to be taking care of our pavements, and that's part of the whole preservation program. So, this number is quite a bit higher than what it's been in previous years, so that we don't have to do budget amendments that much throughout the year. We're up to two seventy.
Two seventy in two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah, it's budget-wise, two seventy.
It started at a hundred. It's two seventy.
This line just has amended budget.
It has amended budget to two seventy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we don't want to increase our budget by more than a hundred percent, and so, we just, you know, I think we had budgeted, and we actually increased our amount in our sales tax for prep work as well, but most of that money went into the prep work for overlays. And there's a reason why we do that. We don't wanna put a good overlay on pavement that has underlying issues, and so, we try to address everything before we do that. In this, this current year, just there was a lot more needs with our overlays and our chip seals. So, two hundred and thirty thousand, we feel is a good number. Culverts, that's 53849. We're increasing that to one hundred and five thousand from the original twenty-three budget of seventy-five thousand. I think the amended, the amended amendment is a hundred and five thousand. Is that right?
Yeah, amended to a hundred and five.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it at the amended amount for this year, but it's an increase from what we had last year originally budgeted. 53850.012 salt, we're decreasing that to two hundred and fifteen thousand, seventy-five dollars. That was two forty in twenty-three, and three hundred and fifty-nine, two fifty in twenty-two. The budgeted amount matches the quantity of two hundred fifty, two hundred, or twenty-five hundred tons that we bid at eighty-six oh three a ton. We bid with the city, and that was this year that we bid that. We have not used as much salt in recent years, and we're optimizing the amount we use per lane mile, and a better, better able to control that with calibration of our trucks and just general understanding of what it takes to clean roads and not have to just dump a bunch of salt on roads.
As you use less salt, do you see less rust on your vehicles?
Unfortunately, no.
No, okay.
Because they're sitting in it so long throughout the year, but.
They start using meat juice?
We do use.
We do.
Okay.
It's only on bridges.
I will say that we did not and will not purchase any salt this year, and so, what we had budgeted, we actually took some of those funds and bought a truck out of that. We had enough going into this year, we didn't use that much, we were fully stocked going into this year, so we'll replenish a little bit next year, but unless we have a big snow, we'll probably still see some of those funds.
Well, when you say that, you know.
You don't know.
So, is there a beet juice line in here anywhere?
I think that probably, yeah, comes out of the calcium chloride, yeah, that's figured in with our.
Where's the line for mailbox repair?
We have a mailbox policy now, so we don't have that anymore.
Okay.
It's come probably out of road materials, where we, we, there's a lot of different things that go out of road materials, so.
The good thing is, like, just that we've got a nice reserve still, so we do have a severe winter. We've got, we're projecting a contingency of still a lot, two million.
You had quite an inventory of, of salt at one time, right? And you've...
We maxed out at about five thousand tons, and we're sitting at about forty-five hundred right now, so. And the thing about that is, we got that big salt dome, and there's salt packed at the bottom that's been there ten years. We really need to get in and clean the whole thing out, and that was kinda the basis for not adding more salt to it.
Right.
We wanna try to get that down pretty low, and when we need salt, we can order and have it delivered within a week, so it's not like, you know, we can get it when we need it.
There used to be issues with that.
Yeah.
Not get it.
Computers, 54901.03, that's decreased to sixteen thousand from twenty-five, three hundred and thirteen, and that's per Brian right now, he gives us the.
As long as Brian says it's okay, then.
He gives us what he recommends for the year, and we go with that, so.
Brian decreased it, so he gets extra points today.
I know, yeah.
But our software increase, that's, uh, 54901.04, that increased to ninety-seven, one seven six from eighty-two, nine fifty-one. And that, that line item includes all vehicle and equipment diagnostic, software, Open Gov, Cartograph, AutoCAD, Microsoft Office 365, all the different types of computer software that we use, that's all figured into that line item.
Vehicle and heavy equipment, that's 54902. I'll go through the list, and this is on the Road and Bridge side, we have some in sales tax, too. So, we're going to purchase a mid-sized excavator at one fifteen, and the two trucks that we have coming in this year that were pre-ordered a year and a half ago, we'll buy spreaders for those and snowplows as well. We would also like to purchase a new forklift and a brush hog attachment for a skid steer and also a rake-nator for a skid steer. 54925, highway maintenance facility, we got two items there. We, we've done quite a bit with our parking lot over the past year associated with the fuel pump replacement, but we also, there's some additional repairs we need to do, so we have forty thousand for that, and then interior and exterior repairs and a waterline repair at twenty thousand dollars. Is there any questions about the 211s Road and Bridge budget? Okay.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't mention it, but the contingency is over two million, a little bit over two, two point one, I think.
That can change as we get to the final.
Yeah, that'll adjust, but that's, you know, every bit of twenty or twenty percent plus of our revenue, so pretty, pretty healthy amount. We'll go to the sales tax side, and this is the budget.
Hundred and eighteen is starting there, yeah.
So, this is...
About eight oh seven, sorry, that's, uh, the numbers there start on page one twenty-two.
One twenty-two. Go through some highlights here, and this is primarily what, what Matt and his department worked on. 54902, that's vehicle and heavy equipment. I mentioned there's some, or was there, there is some in the 211 account, but we also have some in eight oh seven. Those pre-ordered cabin chassis dump trucks, two sixty-two, nine thirty, those will come in this coming year, and then a three-quarter ton Ford pickup at fifty-five thousand for one of our engineering technicians, and then a new skid steer at eighty-two thousand, seventy dollars. Cooperative projects, at the very beginning, I mentioned Wildwood Drive. The funds are budgeted for next year to take that to construction at three million dollars, and that'll include one point five coming from the city. And then, we have Monroe Street, that would be the fifty percent payment to the city for their project, and that's, but they're estimated at eight hundred thousand dollars, and that will be from the expressway to south of Dunklund Street, and clean up the Rock Cut area, and then clean up the intersection with Dunklund. 54908.
So, let's go back to co-op just a second. So, break, break down the three point four point.
So, coming out of our budget, three million will go to Wildwood, and then...
Oh, six and seven, there, I drifted a little. Oh, six and seven, there, I missed it a little presentation. Yeah, sorry.
What page you on there?
Page six.
No, I'm sorry, Mark. What page?
Oh, six, page six of.
Yeah. Yeah. I got off on the wrong page. Thank you. We're good.
So if you look, it should show one point five in the city on the revenue side.
I've, I've heard.
Probably up in the road.
No, is that? Monroe is down the road, literally, figuratively?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and their, their, the city will bid that and award that and track that next year.
Right. So we might be sitting here next year talking about Monroe Street as a co-op?
No, that's, that will be built next year, so.
I'm sorry, Madison. No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madison Street.
Madison, I'm sorry, Madison. Madison is down the road.
So the city, uh.
They moved from one.
They moved.
From Monroe to.
Most of the funds from Monroe over to possibly Madison Street there.
Right.
Yeah, Monroe's just point fifty.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah. It was, Monroe was originally scheduled to go to cap region as a redo.
Yeah.
And it's reduced to really one block and change.
Yeah, payment from, for the Wildwood project, payment from the city is in this two million road construction.
Okay.
Okay, under bridge construction, we have a little bit of money, ninety-five thousand three hundred, and that's for miscellaneous bridge and culvert projects. We do budget a little bit every year to, you know, there's always one or two one-off type projects that we end up doing. Generally culvert replacements may be either on a stream or in a subdivision, and then preventative bridge maintenance. We have funds every year for that. Part of bridge, but in a separate line item nine, or five four nine oh eight point zero zero one, BRO, Bridge Project, seven hundred and six thousand, estimated for next year, and that would be three hundred thousand for Tanner Bridge Road, bridge replacement design, and that ties into the MoDOT grant or funding that we received for that replacement project. Construction would be in twenty-five for that. And then a small bridge in a subdivision off of Scott Station Road, Stirbridge Road, bridge replacement, and that would be design and construction for that project at four hundred and six thousand dollars. Five four nine oh nine, road construction. We have four hundred thousand dollars. That includes one hundred and fifty thousand for Arden Drive subdivision reconstruction, and that is the whole subdivision that is between Rainbow Drive and Country Club Drive and surrounds Brooks Park. So the streets and there'd be some concrete work. That'll all be improved in very similar fashion to what we did on the North Port, West Port subdivision this year. Continuation of our East Bend Road pavement upgrades. We had one hundred thousand in this year's budget. That included some asphalt overlays and pipe or two replacement, and then we'll finish out the rest of that next year. And so East Bend Road, it's been long awaited.
Looking good.
Yeah, we, we are doing that in-house with our own paving machine.
If we could just double widen it a little bit. That's a whole different story.
That gets into the next line item. Or no, it would be that one, too. That's for a later day, Jeff.
Yep.
But the, the plan on that is to do an in-house overlay of about one and a half, two inches, and then in a few years, we'll do a good chip seal over the whole surface, so. And then an upgrade on North Rock Creek Road, and that would include design at a hundred thousand dollars. Start design on it later this year with a likely twenty-six construction year. Five four nine two three, stormwater improvements. We got one point six, or two six million there, and that is, the big one is the South Brooks Drive Phase Three Stormwater Improvements at a hundred thousand dollars. That includes five hundred thousand coming from CDBG and grants, and that would be the, the last phase of multi-phase projects we've done on South Brooks Drive in the Westview Heights area. Miscellaneous stormwater improvements, much like the bridge and culverts, we do have the money in there for that at eighty-five thousand. Viola View subdivision and Van Lu State's, Van Lu State subdivision. Christie will appreciate that.
Oh my goodness, I will, too. I get a lot of calls on them.
Uh, we're gonna overlay Viola View and Paratree Lane and Paratree Court, and part of that will include some curb and gutter and stormwater work at the intersection of Viola View and Sterling Bridge Road.
Yeah.
And then resurfacing culvert prep work at a hundred thousand dollars. So we, I mentioned earlier, all of our overlays, we go through and fix any pavement deficiencies, and we also replace rusted-out pipes. And so that money would go to helping us out on the prep side for that. Five four nine two seven, villages, and this is the hundred thousand that each village gets over the course of the five-year sales tax. We estimate our budget two hundred and fifty thousand each year, and most of that goes to overlays, but sometimes the villages will do some additional work, and they send in a reimbursement request, and those funds cover that. Five four nine two eight, resurfacing, two million, fifty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight is the budgeted amount of that. One million, seven fifty-one, two seventy-eight is for overlays and chip seals, and that would be bid, bid work. And then we have one hundred thousand for resurfacing asphalt prep work, very similar to the culvert prep work. We spend some funds to fix any pavement deficiencies, and then also included in this line item is concrete repair services at two hundred thousand dollars. This year we've done Deardane Drive. We did Namor Place.
Foxmore.
Foxmore. We're doing Clefner Ridge right now. So a lot of these.
Glenstone.
Glenstone. A lot of these concrete streets are in need of spot repairs, panel replacements, and so we started last year doing concrete repair. We did, we bid a concrete repair services contract, kind of an on-call, and we did more of that this year, and we'll do more next year. Safety improvements, five four nine two nine, one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And so five hundred thousand will go to the Wildwood Drive roundabout to get that project, to take that to construction and, and get the funds necessary. The county will put in a little bit more than the fifty-fifty match, and that will cover the roundabout at Wildwood Drive where that intersection will be with Rock Ridge Road, and that'll be considered a safety improvement. So we'll, we'll put those funds into that. And then the grant we received from MoDOT for the Rainbow Drive Sidewalk Tap Project of five hundred thousand dollars. The cost of that will be seven twenty-one, and so we'll design and bid that this year, or twenty-four. Any questions about the, the sales tax, eight oh seven account?
Where do we, where do we record that?
The revenue side of that tap project.
Uh, I.
Is that a road construction, two million?
Okay.
One point five is the Wildwood, half million.
And then.
Half for the tap.
Okay, okay.
The, the next would be the eight oh six, sales tax request that we put in for that, and that would be back a few pages.
That's page one.
One eighteen. So items, items that we put in for that, the oil-burning furnace, I think I mentioned a little bit earlier, for central maintenance at twenty-five thousand dollars. So right now, all the oil, waste oil we collect, we actually pay to have somebody take it. If we put in this furnace, we can actually burn that in the furnace, so we won't have to pay to get rid of it, plus it'll cut down on our propane usage. So ultimately, that's gonna be a savings in the long term, but we would like to install that. Also, PS and E are planned specification estimate for in addition to the central maintenance shop at fifty thousand dollars, and that would be hiring, you know, likely an architect slash engineer to, to draw up those plans and come up with an estimate. We would add to the south of our building where we poured the concrete pad a few years ago, where our hoist sits right now, and this addition would be quite a bit taller than what we currently have right now. We can't raise a dump truck all the way up inside our building, and we have to assemble the beds or, you know, put beds on the, the new trucks outside because we can't raise things up enough. So, and that, that would allow us to move pretty much all the road and bridge maintenance items to the, to the new addition, and then the existing shop would be used for central maintenance and be compatible for the next phase going forward when that time comes. This would just be for plans, specifications, and estimate, and next year at this time, we would have a budget number to use for requests to, to actually do the construction of that. On the planning side, fifty thousand dollars for a new planning department pickup truck, and that would replace a two thousand six Ford used by the senior planner. Twenty-five hundred for iPads for the billing permit inspectors, and twenty-five thousand for digital conversion of billing permit files. Talked to Mark, and I believe that's.
I think those go into the computerization line.
Under information systems.
Right.
I know you got there.
Well, under capital L, yeah, I computed on five four six oh six, on page one twenty.
Yeah.
I had to check with Prime.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, down.
Down on that.
Yeah.
I'll double-check with Prime.
Okay.
Kind of stuff that goes in, typically goes into, into that line.
And then this is under the health department, but I'll mention it. A sprinkler, sprinkler system for landscaping and grounds there at eleven thousand five hundred. And we consulted with Christie at the health department about that and put that into the budget. We did the landscaping in twenty-one, and so this would be watered as well as the surrounding yard area, and allow that to be properly maintained. And then some items to remove from that list, we had, and these are completed or not going to be done. So the public works facility has a hundred thousand dollars for mechanic shop air conditioning. We decided not to do that and instead started to install large fans last year, so that can go away. And then under parks, one fifty for the parking lot. That was being awarded, so that can, it's already covered. And then.
Something that's.
Yeah, that's fine. And then thirty thousand for the compact utility tractor. We already got that one. You can take that off there.
Yep.
Oh, and then what?
It says trailer.
Oh, it says trailer. Yeah, it's that tractor.
Oh, okay.
Well, take my bad, get rid of that there. And then I know there was some, mentioned very early on about ARPA, and we do have the two projects under, under analysis right now, and it's the, the two stormwater runoff control areas. We've been working and communicating with both companies doing those projects, and we'll have public meetings early January. And then after that point, we'll make a decision on which projects to proceed with final design, to have projects to bid and awarded by the end of the year. So.
And.
In company, yes.
Okay.
Don't, we don't see any real issue with that, but you are, it is gonna be tight on time, and so we'll have to make some, some quick decisions on which to move forward with. We have a pretty good idea of which ones are gonna be the most effective just in early communication with them, but their final report and analysis is incomplete, but it'll be done and ready to present to the public in January.
Okay.
So.
Got about a little over a million still budget for that in ARPA?
Yeah, I don't remember what, what was the total amount?
Two engineering.
Right now, I'm showing one million, sixty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine. That's like taken out, some of the planning expenses already paid off of it, but it's.
Engineering, total cost is about two, two hundred and sixty thousand or so, give or take. That's between the two of them.
Right.
And so additional.
Just left that page eight of seven. What, is that an invisible ink there? That's a page eight of seven.
Oh, yeah.
I'm still trying to teach him how to use a computer.
It looked good when I first did it, but I made some changes this morning and did.
I was like, hey, I had a note page also. How about that?
This, it should've said, this page intentionally replying.
For Jeff's entertainment only. Thank you, guys.
So I, that's, that's all I have. I think we got a really good budget submitted, very good outlook for projects and equipment purchases, and look forward to continue what we've been doing the past several years and just keep on moving forward and making good improvements on our road and bridge system and planning improvements with the permit, permit fee restructure. We'll be looking for that in the next few weeks. See where it goes.
Let's take a quick five-minute break.
Hey, Eric.
Yeah.
You're done before time, too. You got two minutes to keep talking.
That was my goal.
No, I'll just say now.
No, that clock's wrong.
Passing to my supervisor.
Right on time.
My, my problem is that nine forty-five.
I'll put that on the list when John drew.
It's been on the list for thirty years.
Is there, is there a petition on it? Do you know?
Doubt it. It's paved everywhere around it now.
Hope we got a petition on it. If we don't have a petition, that would be the first start.
Well, that was, it was twenty years ago, but then crazily, you know, give up the tree and go down there right away.
Really?
Yeah, but if everything's paved around it, it'd be a connector route.
It would be, because inertia will go down. You could connect it over to double A, right? Yeah, double A.
On the backside.
Just lobby your county commissioners.
Uh-huh.
You have, you have to get on the waiting list.
Debbie, how's that gonna look if we're out there taking care of your road?
Prop's great, screen.
I need to get on the west. I'm happy that you admire us, though.
There's been a lot of calls on your road.
I think.
I hear a lot of two hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's not good.
Today, so.
Well, it will be close.
If not taken care of for sure.
Well, two point two five.
It'd be a big part of the.
Yeah, that's just what.
Seems like it's close enough.
Yeah, and it was, it was.
I see your girls tonight.
Has to make that.
Yeah.
I should practice.
Which compared me down.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought, yeah, some of the.
One point five.
It'll be.
How are you?
I'm sort of gonna be seeing expenses still. We got, we got.
Don't expect.
In the bank right now.
I don't know exactly. Megan doesn't wanna shoot, so this is a back shooting. I don't know if I'm just kidding. I just hear.
Yeah, I looked at her close, but.
Ratings.
Well, we've got some big things still make off of.
He made a comment that he shouldn't have shot it. He had to sit on the student's crutches, so he might not shoot.
It's gonna shoot.
But you know, I think it's a.
That could take into fact if.
Culvert amounts, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Of course.
If it's on, if it's on the plus side, that's good, right?
Yeah.
Not like, that's always a changing number.
You don't know until after the last button.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, very good.
That's right. That was what you wanted to talk about, was us.
Here.
Yeah.
And then I will, I'll send you my revised salary structure with what, what I spent throughout, or whatever, something else, you know. And then we had already done, taken promotion, and I, we had that already there, and a vacant position was the assistant manager, and that one vacant for now.
It's still in there, so.
But we'll see, see where we end up.
Yep.
All right, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mark, is that.
Eric, did you hear anything back on the tour of the cart facility?
Yeah, we're set for that. Is it Monday? At eight-thirty? I'm sorry, the fourth?
Sorry.
It's eight-thirty. So we just planned to be out there right where, that's how it sits right now.
Yep. It's at eight-thirty, right?
Uh-huh.
Good.
Put this together nice harder, Eric.
There's a lot on there.
Yeah, there is a lot, but it moves too fast. No.
We kinda got, I don't, I wouldn't say sidetracked. We talked about permit fee restructure. I probably did most time, and it's.
You stay creative.
Okay.
You call it a permit, but it's really inspection. We don't do it the way these people, you know, because the city, we're like you.
We're all.
We don't, we're not trying to make money.
We're just, and actually, as a matter of fact, all the utility permitting, like all these utilities.
Provide our, you know, because the city. We don't, we're not trying to make money.
We're just, and actually, as a matter of fact, all the utility permits and like all these utilities that are doing a permit. It's state statute and it will not charge a fee for a utility permit that is beyond what it actually costs your staff. That doesn't apply to this necessarily, but. See what happens. Okay, so yeah, I travel around and visit. I think I've been in office a lot, so.
That's what he likes to do. I thought we might see him down at the Marrieter.
Yeah.
Did we see like-
No.
River out there.
No. There weren't, there weren't. But I don't know if there were as many sponsors. And I know the hospitality rooms, there weren't as many.
Which gave us more for us.
Yeah.
Is that, is that, there's the other office too, the C cam, and that's the one in the spring, right?
That's the required training.
Yeah, this, this is just the map.
They're gonna do C cam, I understand, one more time at the lake and then after that it's gonna be remote.
Oh, so this year C cam's gonna be down at the lake?
Yeah, it was last year too.
February, March?
It was in Columbia, I thought.
No.
Oh, did, were we back at the lake last year?
Yeah, we were, we were there.
But.
Okay.
And the one that was usually in Columbia, this last March was at the lake. And next March it'll be at the lake. And that's the end of it. Then on is remote.
So they just need legislation to eliminate it, really. I mean, it's-
There's still charges to-
Oh, yeah.
How many hours do you have to do together here? Is it one?
I don't know, we're down there.
It's like two and a half days.
Yeah.
Well, you learn that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot.
Yeah. But this is, a lot of the same speakers.
The death of the apartments.
Yeah, well, everybody's got their stories to tell, right? You have to kind of meld them together to, yeah. Make nobody happy.
It's not all about making them happy. Not gonna cover some bunch.
For a, for a day and a half, not even a day and a half. There's a lot of good topics.
Yeah. You need any help now. Play. So I was. I, I watched the video.
Hey, there's a great training Columbia Conservations on Colbert.
Yeah, I got that email too.
And it's, it'll be fantastic.
Okay, Mark, can you do yours and Nate Mills?
Yeah.
Seven minutes, we're down. Actually, seven minutes now.
It's a little different this year. I'm gonna ask for a-
Okay. All right.
Yeah, my wife says she's some, some winters.
Oh. Yeah, good. I think I saw that.
Okay, do you want to answer?
Uh, my budget is the first one in the book, so.
I'm the lowest apartment number too.
One twelve, so. This is normally would be very quick. I'm not asking, I'm asking for one thing. Salaries, just COLA four percent is what I'm, I'm asking for. All the, the little bit of materials and supplies, no change. Asking, not asking for anything in addition there, I don't think. Oh, maybe a little bit, no. No, nothing. Little bit in communications, I think the phone bill might be going up just a little bit. Well, I spend about a hundred and fifty dollars a year on phone lines. But on salaries. And I'm excited to have Rob on, on board. Of course, my previous full-time chief deputy, she, she left, well, she left full-time status back in the summer sometime. So I didn't, uh, didn't get her full-time replacement for a while. So we saved, we were saving salary money during the year. And in fact, that was not a bad time to be down employee because that was right after the audit was done. A little bit before budget started to take place. So, uh, so I wasn't in a big hurry to fill, uh, full-time. But the way it turned out with, with Rob not starting until November. Uh, I've got a little chart up there saying, uh, this is about a hundred and seventy-two thousand was what the, uh, pre-budget was in twenty twenty-three for salaries. Only going to be spending about a hundred and fifty-two thousand in, uh, full-time. Then we moved some of the money to part-time because Lisa's, uh, status is part-time. So what I'm asking for, well, I put in there twelve thousand part-time. Lisa is still my previous chief deputy. She's still available and willing to work part-time. She was a great helping getting this budget together in the amount of time we had. She's helping, currently helping to train, train Rob. And it'd be nice to have her around to help early next year when we go through the twenty twenty-three Williams keeper's audit process. And she did a lot of that last year. If I could keep her around to help with that and again, help, help train Rob or with that, that process. And by now, I was hoping that I would have been through one year and things would have, you know, our, our, things would have been moving smoothly. But of course, we had a little disruption and, uh, so this year's budget again was a challenge. But, but I was hoping by now to have like, uh, more time and, and whatever to, to actually do some audits. I mean, yeah, the county auditor's statutory duties are mainly the budget officer and the chief accounting officer for the county. But there's also statutory, not obligation, but opportunity, you know. Auditor, the county auditor can do audits of other, the other county departments. And I was hoping to by now do a little more of that, that hasn't materialized yet, but I, but I, you know, thought I could help.
Your things will be a little-
Yeah, so if, if, if you would allow me to keep Lisa on for some part-time hours next year, I could, uh, she could help us out, maybe get some, some audits. And of course, I'll use Rob and, and Liz, my two full-time employees for, to help with that process. But, uh, so what I'm asking for is to take maybe, oh, a little more than half or, or I could drop that down to even ten thousand part-time. But if we want to go with half of the twenty thousand we saved in, in actual salaries this year, if you could give me half of that or part of that back in, in part-time, uh, help next year.
Mark, I, I like the idea of you showing up unannounced at a, maybe, I mean, a surprise audit, no kidding, of a certain fund in a certain elected official's office. I mean, if you were still at the auditor's office, looking at third-class counties, you do that, you did that, right? And sometimes-
To some extent.
Yeah, I mean, you, well, they knew you were coming, but they, they were, they were also expecting to have to prove their numbers when the state auditor showed up. First-class, first-class counties hire their outside auditor to do it. And really, the outside auditor is just focusing on the big numbers. And the materiality. So they don't have time to-
Yeah. Does a true financial statement audit, state auditor's office, we would-
You look at performance.
We could go down in the weeds a little more and do some more detailed, uh, audit work, yeah.
You always knew where there was some, something to find if it was, and I shouldn't use the, um, elected officials title or position. But you could go to certain elected officials in every county and find a certain fund that was always ugly. Not necessarily dishonest, but sloppy. And I think we probably do it here.
I'm fine with like a surprise audit, but I mean, we've added a person to your office, so I'm not crazy about adding too much more part-time. I know we saved a little bit this year. So maybe have a little carryover to help do the, the training with Rob and get him settled in and stuff. I might be able to swallow some of it, but I just, we've added another position up there into your, to your office. So I'm trying to scale back on the part-time, just so you know where I'm coming from on that, Mark.
Sure.
I'll beat you up just like everybody else. You just happened to be first today.
I, yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, that's it for mine.
Okay. My golly, we're, it's ten o'clock. We're, we're-
Oh, I didn't go, oh, I went-
Mark got us back on time, that should be worth something.
This is gonna be one of the best years we've ever had.
Oh, you're jinxing us, man. Don't do that, Kathy.
I know.
She don't believe in it, but, so you don't have to believe in it for it to jinx me. All right, what page are we at?
All right, we're on page fifty-six. Did you have anything to add, started? Okay. So, you know, over the last few years, our budgets changed some just because of COVID. We've got some new contracts from DHSS. They've been expanded, they've been, um, increased the dollar amount. So, um, it's really nice to see that public health did get some recognition after COVID and, and we're starting to see some increases, um, in some of those contracts. So the ones I wanted to highlight is that new public health infrastructure grant. It just started, it's for two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. It goes through two thousand twenty-seven, that's the one we're using for accreditation. So it's kind of a mix of personnel for us, some supplies, some other, and some contract fees. And then the ELC ED, you know, increased and got another two hundred and fifty thousand. I think the thing to note also with those two contracts is we do get like a ten percent indirect or, or administrative cost that, you know, that's the ten percent they give us to kind of administer the contract. So that goes directly into county general revenue. And then that incentive funding that we talked about where we get a little extra for you attending training, some for me to attend training. They're not going to give us a separate line item for that. It's going to go into that, um, it's four nine seven seven one, it's shared public health. It's what we used to call the core public health contract. It's the LPHA participation agreement that we get for like CD, food complaints, food, all that. They're just gonna funnel it through that, um, line item instead of giving us a separate contract. So instead of, I think that one usually runs a hundred and, it's ten thousand one twenty-five a month. Anyway, it's, it's gonna add about forty thousand dollars to that contract. So, um, I know this, I probably sound like a broken record. I listened earlier to see where you guys were in the budget and heard that the main difference between like Toby's budget and other people's budget is the salary line. I did add in the four percent that, that Mark put in there, but I also, you know, over the last few years, we've increased the front desk staff. This year, we eliminated one of the nurse positions and we added to the nurses. I didn't tap into that reserve fund that all the departments had. So I really feel like the only group that hasn't been increased to kind of go with market value is our environmental specialists. And we, we do have, continue to have a lot of turnover with those and we have a hard time hiring. The state, the lowest one they have starts at fifty-five and we're at forty-eight. So it's, it's hard to compete. I would like to increase all of their salaries by four thousand, so that would make our starting fifty-two. I think it's not as much as the state, but, uh, still gets us up there. And that's on the, the second sheet in that package I gave you. There's that market adjustment for, um, those four environmental staff. So, um, and one of them is vacant right now. We had another resignation, um, as of December the seventh, Brandon resigned. So we just got Jade hired and then we were fully staffed for, I don't know, a month and a half. You know, Luke left earlier this year. So it's, those positions are a struggle and they take a lot of training. You can't just walk in and, and do an inspection, so. And then the other item that we had previously talked about was adding that nurse practitioner position. So I did, there's a paragraph, the fourth paragraph down talks about the salary for that position and then also supplies. And that's what that third page of that document is, is kind of startup supplies. Some of it's like, um, you know, we want to be able to do a rapid strep, COVID, RSV. You know, some of them will have to replenish as it goes on. We've talked about having that to be, you know, free for county employees or in family that are on insurance, but charged for other, um, employees. You know, depending on the nurse practitioner, if they'll do family cleaning activities, we could, um, discontinue the, the contract we have with the current nurse practitioner. So a lot of possibilities there and some possibility to, um, perhaps save on insurance and also to bring in some revenue. Harry had mentioned some to me about liability insurance. So, um, I know that, I could talk to Jill a little bit because, you know, in the past, when my nurses have asked, well, what if something happens when I administer a vaccine, I, I mess it up. And the county insurance, which was MoPer at the time, his travelers always covered that. She did say because this is different and, and they would be prescribing and perhaps diagnosing that we might have to increase that coverage. Typically, like the nurse practitioner we have now carries her own malpractice insurance and I would imagine that most of them probably do. I think we helped with the cost of that last year, the year before during COVID. So that might be something we have to explore. They would still be under a collaborative practice agreement with our medical director. That's required for NPs that don't work in those clinics. Actually, I think even if they work in the clinic, they have to be under a collaborative practice agreement. So.
I've talked to some other government municipalities and things like that. I think there's, there's some other entities that would, would probably like to participate in, in this commitment statement. Money too, when their employees need to see a-
Right. And we could set a fee schedule for those that are on county insurance.
I'm gonna be more selfish, I'm not sharing right away. I think we get this up and running and a lot of things that we heard at some of the people we've talked to is the benefit that provides to the employee. That just, they appreciate that so much, they're not standing in line. You may still have to make a phone call and an appointment, but it's not like all the stuff you're hearing about people getting in and stuff these days.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it'd be another benefit to our employees that is a, a cost that's spread out throughout the county. I'd say it's a great idea if we can get it up and running and, um, so the salary, does that include any benefits or is that a-
No, that's the straight salaries. The benefits will be on top of that.
So we would need to add that in there too, that would be another cost that, because we need to look at the, the bottom line and see where we're at with it, what we want to invest in it. So I think it's definitely worth looking at.
Yeah, we talked about it a couple of years ago, I guess, but I think-
Before COVID and all that.
Yeah, and, and, uh-
Well, and I think, I, I think Debbie had asked me, didn't, about the survey we did of county employees, which that was about three years ago. And I, I would assume that, I, I don't know where the, the results are, it's probably lost in my computer somewhere. But healthcare has changed so much in the last three years and our, our workforce has changed. Our turn, we've, our turnover has been huge. So I'm sure that, you know, um, I'm not sure the results of that survey are really valid anymore just because everything has changed so much. And I don't remember if most people were in favor of it or not. I think it kind of depended on what services we're able to offer.
I'll probably be the Grinch on this one.
Somebody needs to, right?
Yeah, it's my turn to be Grinch, okay?
Yeah. It's Jeff, it's Harry's turn, I know.
That's right. You want to come sit in this chair and I'll take the Grinch's chair? But, uh, I, I, I kind of don't like the optics of a public health department having a suite over here, not for the public. For, it's the employees who work for the public. So, you know, no one else, I won't say no one else can come in there and do that. But, uh, if, if a private company wants to set up their own nurse practitioner, like a large employer that's got a thousand employees, go for it, you know? But we're really taking public money and then spending it on county employees. I don't like the optics of it.
I think we had talked about in the future, the opening this to the public as well.
Okay, so, uh, who, who gets served first? Uh, you know, the cost, uh, I assume, you know, we can ensure the, the exposure we have there. But, uh, there are plenty of, um, urgent care facilities in this town. We're competing with the hospitals, we're competing with the other urgent care facilities when we do this. And we have a, and we get to use other people's, we get to use the public's money to, to take care of the four hundred employees of the county. And I don't like it. I don't like the looks of it.
I think that the intent would be that it would actually save us some money on the health insurance side. We take care of it in-house, uh, you know, and keep people at work more often too, because there, uh, there's benefits to it that aren't necessarily just on taxpayers' dime. I see exactly where you're coming from and I think that's something that we do have to measure it out, you know? Our investment over here, what, what's our return?
Yeah. Show, show me, you know, i- if it were a quote, our profit center or a, we can, we can say this is what it's going to cost to have a nurse practitioner, pay her all the benefits, uh, do all this thing. And what do we get out of it? We'll get some revenue out of it because she'll, he- We'll get some revenue out of it because she'll, he he or she will be providing a service to others other than county employees. And and what does that save the county in terms of that employee doesn't have to take off three hours to go see a or wait in line at a urgent care? Because sometimes you don't make appointments. You just sit there. I understand that. So show me, show me the.
And I don't know if it would help work comp either because something happens. You've got a nurse practitioner right there, gets you an idea of what's going on before you have to send them to the hospital.
In there with a with a broken.
No, we won't have.
With a compound fracture, fracture, but.
Talking to whatever other municipalities, you know, their employees go in, they pay the co-pay. And I said, oh, this is good. But then a municipality gets billed two hundred and fifty dollars for their employees' visit to this urgent care or quick care. So what this is going to be saving is that two hundred and fifty dollars that we would be paying to an urgent care.
And we get considered UMR. We have steep discounts. We're not ever paying that full amount through our health insurance fund. Being a member of that, negative big discounts.
That's what we need to sit down and compare it to because I I think there's a good trade-off on it. I it's definitely worth looking into. And the work comp thing, they they did stitches over at the one we visited with. So something happens, go get your stitches. If you go, we had to pay for somebody to go get stitches. I can guarantee it'd be more than what we're going to be paying the practitioner, so.
We work through a company like M M and they get bigger discounts through those agencies too. We're not paying full price. So that would all have to be considered.
It would all add up. I mean, it's just taking it all into consideration, so.
So is that how it would work if a county employee went to the nurse practitioner, it'd be billed through our insurance?
No.
No.
Oh, no, it wouldn't?
It'll be free. We talked about it being free for the county employee and nothing will be billed.
I'm fine with even having a co-pay. If you're going to pay a co-payer wherever you go anyway, if they pay us a co-pay, twenty-five dollars or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's up to you.
I could walk in there.
And we talked about like if we could, you know, say we decided to do the public and we took appointments, but a county employee, you know, they had to go pick their kid up from school because they had a fever. Well, we would, you know, they would get first priority, but I see the, that's where it's a benefit. If you try, if you have a sick little one and you're trying to get into pediatrician, good luck, you know? And if they have to pick their kid up from school because they have a fever, they have strep, they can run over, get a strep test, go get an antibiotic and, you know, get them on the mend. That's where it's going to save people a lot of time too because they have to take off and, you know.
With the cost or without the cost?
Yeah, I don't.
Still, we're not paying the full cost.
Right.
And we can put it in the budget. I mean, we've got control over this and then visit it, revisit it and take it through all the exercises all through the year and just figure out. It's not something we have to try to implement tomorrow. Let's get our ducks in a row. But it seems like some of these private businesses, if if they're doing it, I think they have a model that we can go off of. We don't have to reinvent the wheel.
They also did, the one that we visit also did some drug testing, which I think pre-employment drug testing, we could definitely run that through the health department. Now, accident testing, we don't, we wouldn't be set up for the twenty-four seven and things like that. But pre-employment, I think that we could probably save some money by doing that. I would have to look at the cost. But we could easily set up one of the bathrooms in the health department to do that.
I feel so good not to be the Grinch this time. Good job, though. You played it well.
Questions about the environmental staff?
No, we've had a lot of turnover on that too. And I I think, like I said with Toby earlier, what she was asking wasn't out of question. I don't think this is trying to keep the state from stealing them from us.
Yeah.
So it's pretty much a lot of the positions right now. We're just, we're going to be facing that.
Yeah. And I have a, I have a feeling my environmental supervisor will want to retire soon and I really need to get the staff stable to be able to, you know, I don't, I don't know how close he is. We've had those discussions. So I I I need some stable staff. So when he retires, we're.
He can't retire.
He's one of those state retirees.
Yeah, he's already retired with Ann Tracy. I know.
He's tired again.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's it's great to get the people that retire from the state because they have so much experience, but they, yeah.
Yeah, we're lucky to have them while we do.
Exactly, exactly. Any other questions for me? Look at that. I got you fifteen minutes.
Hey, and we even got in on the nurse practitioner part.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, usually.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they, GBH is there and making great progress on our renovations, like the lab's totally empty, looks huge. So, yeah, there. I know, it's awesome. I think they projected the middle of December to be finished.
I guess what we could do is move up one of those last two, health insurance fund or capital.
Yeah, let's do that.
Absolutely.
How long, health insurance, that shouldn't take long. Let's start with that. That would be page forty-six. I mean, that's, it's all pretty well set. I mean, well, the numbers. What's that? Oh.
Not if we're using it for the outside.
Oh, that's true. It's all strictly internal. We could put it in our health insurance budget. No, I just, like I said, yeah, it's not that I disagree with Christine, but I just did not put any new new salary money in anybody's, anybody's budget at this time. Yeah, yeah. So that's really the only difference that between my numbers on the health department budget and her was that nurse practitioner. Everything else was about the same.
So we kind of talked about this fund when we did the renewal of the cost for employees for health insurance during open enrollment. And you guys did take the the five point, it was five point six increase that, and we did spread that out to each department's cost. That money per employee will be going into this fund. It only pays for the administrative cost, but then we also increased the cost from seventy-five thousand an employee through reinsurance to eighty-five thousand. So so you could see a little bit additional revenue coming in here because of that. And then again, the medical services, those are just the ones that go over the the seventy-five this year, eighty-five next year.
We got a lot of money out of that with the large.
There was quite, there was at least six, so.
Is that, we've got almost a million dollars from that.
Reinsurance.
Yeah, reinsurance.
And initially, we paid that out, so and then we got that reimbursed. That's just kind of how that works. So if you're talking about a nurse practitioner just for us, you could potentially take it out of this fund. But if you open that up to other entities, I would highly suggest that does not come out of here.
Other entities, like other.
Like city of Jefferson.
Right.
So.
Okay.
And the personnel cost is a couple of people from, or actually it's one now, it's changed. From the health department, she does the wellness program. So part of her time gets billed back here. And then the wellness expense, you know, you guys have been generous to do the healthy snacks program. So that's kind of where that comes from. And obviously, that's it as far as we draw a little interest on that account. But I think we just see how next year takes us with the ever-increasing cost of.
We're all going to be healthy next year.
Unless you guys get.
Some of us were healthy this year. Some of us weren't.
I know this year, we're just, I'm going to burn all my twenty twenty-three calendars, New Year's Eve.
Is there any questions you guys have about that fund or any concerns?
The what, the interesting part to me, Debbie, will be we've moved from seventy-five to eighty-five. And the crystal ball tells us that the six people are going to cost us sixty thousand dollars i- if you use historical projections or projections based upon. But we turned around and saved more than that sixty. We saved a hundred, right? So we could really, we could experience ten people going from costing us the extra ten. That's a hundred and we've saved a hundred on a another piece of the insurance cost. So it'll be interesting.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. And also the, you know, the the drug changing to SmithRX this year has really helped us.
And have, have, we have pulled the trigger on the Ozempic trend rate. If if you, if you want to take this drug to lose weight, it's on you. If you're taking this drug because the doctor says you have, you're prediabetic or diabetic, it's on the care, it's on the plan.
Yes.
Okay.
So that was already effective November one.
Yeah, we've done that. All right.
So, yep. And Wall Street has been a very good partner in helping us cut work, not cut, but look in advance to what medical field is changing and that we stay on top of it. We meet quarterly almost.
And we have no employees that have been, as they say, lasered.
No. Our our contract with UMR is a non-laser contract. Does not mean that, you know, we could get to another carrier and we could get lasered.
Right.
Or Sun Life would make it so high that they would want us to move, you know? We've been very lucky. And again, we hadn't had to increase the premium for over six years. And during open enrollment, most employees were still very appreciative that we could pay the full cost for them. And the small amount that it went up on dependents, there really wasn't that much grumbling and they really couldn't, considering we hadn't raised it for six years, so.
And we're still gonna, it it looks like it was going to go down significantly, but we're still gonna initially, but we're still going to carry forward a healthy balance. I mean, I put two point seven million in the budget or, yeah. But I just look at our cash balance, we're still, we're still around three million right today in our, in that fund, cash, yeah.
And, yeah, we've been hovering around the two point eight at the time I did the, but cash balance in this spreadsheet. So we might be up to three.
Now, if we have a big month of claims next month, it'll drop some. But right now, I'm still looking right at three million carry forward, so. But I agree, I think it's a good idea to raise. We haven't raised anything in, as I said, six years. Five percent raise to help ward off any significant claims and expenses. Good?
We want to do a list early.
Yep.
If you move ahead, then we can go back to.
You're ready.
We can go back to.
Mine's easy.
She doesn't, you don't ask for much.
No, I I think most everything's pretty much.
Page forty, forty-one, sorry.
That's okay. Um, you know.
That's got it spelled out instead of just G I S. I couldn't find it. Thank you.
Forty-two, actually, where the numbers are, but, yeah.
That's okay. Yeah, the maintenance on our Geo Cortex that we share with the city will go up five percent most likely. We won't know for sure until, I think, May is when we get billed for that. Esri, I did recently find out that they are increasing their licenses five to seven percent for twenty twenty-four. They have not increased for years, so I just received word about that and I will know more next month, but that'll probably raise our maintenance like five hundred and thirty-ish dollars. Other than that, I think everything else is approved the way that I submitted it.
So on equipment service contracts, we may be.
We may have to increase that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll know more. I turn my quote in and then they send me a bill. If I turn it in too early, they expect me to pay the bill within thirty days, which is in this year's budget, next year's budget. So I wait to do that. So, but everything else, I think, is as I requested, so.
I'm just curious, when's the last time we sent a flyover in Lethal County and all about that?
Um, actually, it was twenty twenty, but I believe the state is going to be doing some flyovers and they're changing to six inch, so we may not have to pay for that next time.
Wow.
So we may get it for free, so. They, last time, I think they did twelve inch, which is fine and leap off. But they they've been talking about doing six inch and that's what the plan is going forward, leap off. So if they continue to put that in the budget, it would be awesome. It would save us a lot of money. Oh, the other thing isn't G I S, it's my other hat, the county website. And it's not in my budget, but if I'm anticipating the five percent yearly increase that is on our contract, that is something you'll have to look at.
Brian's maintenance.
One twenty-eight, Brian's maintenance.
So that's the other thing that I have written down to mention just in case.
Can you get that amount for, you think it will be a five percent?
That's what's on the contract is that they increase it every year five percent, so.
Whenever you get that up.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all I have.
I want to thank you for working with Brian and Brent and helping you. You stepped forward. I really, I I appreciate everything.
Not a problem.
We all appreciate everything.
Absolutely. I'd echo that.
We, we make a pretty good team, I think, down there. And with our new people, it's going to be extra good, so.
And you could have some good poker games down.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Don't put that in the paper.
Anyway, any questions for me?
It's not being broadcast right now either.
I know, but anyways, I just want to, I want to thank you.
No problem.
Good team player.
Civic plus. My brain wasn't functioning for a second there. Okay?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So do I do capital improvements really quick?
We'll call Steve and let him know if he can come in here or whatever. Or do you think this will take fifteen minutes?
Should take a little, might take a little time. Shouldn't take too long if someone wants to.
Some of those kind of go through each time we go through a department too, don't they?
This is, well, you know, it's might take a little time. It's it's going through. Going through that chart basically on page one eighteen.
We're not saying yes or no to any of it.
No, no, but this is, this is, yeah, I mean, this is what, based on, a big chunk of this is based on Greg Camp's list. And of course, we got the, we had the public works parks and planning in there. Things that the courts requested, those are a couple of big ticket items. And a little bit that the recorder requested, but most of this is kind of a lot of ongoing stuff, I think, that's been in previous budgets.
Yeah, we've had the Carnegie building elevator, I don't, forever. That's been on there.
Well, just so you know, I did run a purchase orders, open purchase orders. We've got close to half a million already open right now that we're still paying on projects, but they're probably not on this list.
No.
So.
Carry forward.
Yeah. And in our fifth.
Didn't realize last year, but I'll do that this year.
I just hope the POs are, you know, keeping up with the bills that we've paid. So, but keep in mind that what you get in sales tax is about one point two million. But the majority of this is carry forward money. So each year, our fifteen percent is just one point two. There was obligations made in that five-year sales tax, you know, for parks. And I can give you that brochure that we had on that too. But these are definitely projects that, you know, a lot of them are one-time projects, but keep in mind, one point two is what we usually have every year.
Okay. Yeah, right now, that carry forward number of, now, I'm looking at page one twenty right now. That's, that's the eight oh six budget, kind of revenues and expenses. The the three point two million carry forward looks, that's about exactly what we got in the bank right now. So, yeah, that that number looks pretty good.
And and keep in mind, we still have the capital if we are at five million.
Right. When we get to another section of the budget, we're, I continue, again, put that five million dollar capital amount in general fund. It's been in the last two budgets, but none of it's been spent. but none of it's been spent, so I'll continue that.
Do you have the project commitments? I'd say that maybe for the juvenile center, not whether it was coming out of cares, and besides that, the POs that are out there, and then these.
Right. Currently, nothing budgeted out of 806 for the Pranger Center. Nothing, nothing in there at this point.
Other than that, engineering network, I think, that you had this morning?
I'd like to request the schedule to go back to, on page 118, and I know this is a really loosey-goosey schedule, but I'd like to see it built from maybe, let's just use 2020 as the first column. Can we go back and, and see what that capital request schedule was like in 2020 and 2021? And, and we don't, we don't look at this one, we look at this once a year and we don't look at history. We, and I, I wanna see what's fallen off, what's been added on, just get a little better sense of, of what our wish list was, has grown, has depleted, and where it is today. I think history on that would be good.
I think 2020 and 2021, we really didn't spend a lot of money.
Well, I'm not talking about spending, I'm talking about that request schedule.
Yeah.
And sometimes we'll see things fall off and we didn't buy, we just, they just fell off, I think, probably.
And we have stuff come up that may not have been on the list, so.
Yep.
Yeah. But I know the Carnegie building elevator, that's been on the list for ever and ever and ever.
Well, we could talk about a little more of this when Greg's, when he comes in tomorrow, but like, okay, we start with, those first few items are things like, you know, equipment items he is asking for. I think a couple of these he's been asking for for two or three years, maybe. But that, that's a small amount. But then we get to the building projects, like I said, the Carnegie elevator is a big one. Now, for health build, health building, that sprinkler system, I think that was, Public Works was gonna help with that. But the other items are things that Greg, you know, believes are priorities, the highest priorities for the, for the health building, a new awning, a pan exterior, replace outdoor siding.
Sprinkler, yeah.
Public Works told us to take the million, the hundred thousand off the air conditioning, right?
Right, right. Some of the stuff has, has to come off, but then in the Shepherd's Building, those floor drains, I think have been on there for a while.
Yeah.
Now, the old jail tear down kinda comes and goes fluctuating. We had, we thought maybe last year was only gonna be 250,000, now it's back up, we gotta back up to a million again. I mean, there could be a lot more costs than just the tear down.
Well, when we tear it down, we have to, we have to replace it. I mean, it, we just have to have it salvaged.
Well, replacing it might cost more than, well, should, will cost more than.
I, I think, I think the tear down number is too high, but then we should add another line for Sally Port, temporary Sally Port or something to that effect, because the, the sheriff is not gonna be happy if he has to march them over here in leg arms as opposed to having them sitting right below the courtrooms waiting to go up to see the judge. So, and I hear.
We had Aaron's give us a quote on, on taking it down when they were doing some of the city's houses on Adams and.
But that, that quote's expired.
It, it's expired, so, but again, it wasn't, it wasn't as high as.
So Jeff's kinda right. What we do put in the budget is just a placeholder for capital improvement and computers and, you know, so it's, it's not that you're asking to approve any of this now, and, but it's just, so you're thinking about, you know, what money there is to.
I said we've got county park parking lot.
That, that comes off.
That comes off, so. And did they say take that trailer off as well?
Yeah, that was, it was actually tractor.
Yeah, did we take that off?
That's already involved, yeah. So, yeah, some of that comes off.
We do, we do. Are we working on the repairs to the large courtroom? Cause I know that's something.
Jessica had bid out the carpeting and reupholstering those chairs and stuff.
Yeah, cause we, we need to do that.
He's still working with Scruggs on that final.
Okay, okay.
How would that look?
That, that is pathetic.
Well, we talked about possibly bidding out, having an actual contractor or somebody that we could hire to come do stuff, so when the judge or clerk comes in and says, I got pieces of the wall falling on me, we need to have this fixed and we can get it done and not keep putting Band-Aids on it or putting lipstick on the pig, however you wanna look at it, but that stuff needs to be, be addressed sooner than later as well. But if we get them seats taken care of, that'd be a nice thing, that's for sure.
I mean, right now, the budget shows taken in about counting the carry forward, four and a half million, spending about three and a half million, of course, yeah, the way things go, typically will not spend that, but then to carry forward, I would say a minimum of a million contingency on carry forward. But again, like, projects go slowly, that's, yeah, like Debbie said a lot, it's just kinda a placeholder, numbers for now at least.
Yeah, this is our second year of this five years, so, you know, we're getting into the part of it now.
What's juvenile coming out of here? Did y'all already go through that part?
No, that's not, none of that juvenile's currently.
But that's where, that's, we've got the money, the other part of juvenile, so.
We've got a lot of money in general fund.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm like, I'm like, that's, that's where, you know.
Yeah, we've got that 5 million we've been appropriating out of general fund the last couple of years, not, not spending none of it.
So we're, we're.
We've got a whole lot of stuff over there that courthouse needs done, and then if we take down the old jail and have to go up with something, we're gonna buzz off through a lot. Now, I think you need to keep the cost down on that juvenile center with the money that we have from ARPA and still keep the money that we have in general, use it for other stuff, so.
Is it the argument to get Judge Beanum's opinion on what's, what's more important, spending money on the new juvenile versus big courtroom improvements? Is that's?
It's not even the big courtroom improvements. I mean, they got plumbing over there, it needs to be totally redone, that's a mess over there.
Courthouse improvements, I mean.
Yeah, electric, and then getting rid of the old jail. We got so much stuff over there and it took us a while to get it built up to the 5 million we're adding. If you're gonna buzz off through it, just with the juvenile center, we'll look how long it's gonna take to grow it back up, and prices are not going back, they're not going down.
Just to maintain, you know, again, we only get 1.2 million in, once you would spend off those reserves. On those two projects alone, you could spend the, all that money. But then we have 1.2 every year.
I mean, you're looking at one-time costs for the juvenile center, but look at the jail, the law enforcement center. We continuously have things that we've got to address over there. You're gonna have more maintenance people, they'll probably want more employees, and it's, these are not gonna be just one-time costs. It's gonna keep going and going.
Well, I would think a bigger juvenile center would need definitely more costs, right, to maintain, run it and operate it. And, I mean, I, I understand that, for sure.
I mean, if we can bring in some juveniles from outside and do it as a regional, but then the argument is that Camden's looking at doing a regional, Boone's doing a regional, so what do we need one for? If they're, they're, they should be our region, so we should be able to send kids there. And for 12 million dollars that you're talking about spending on a new building, we can take care of sending kids somewhere else for a long time. So, we could keep what we have for residential and take care of the kids that, you know, need that help, that are having problems at home, not just the troubled ones that need actual security and to be jailed. So, I think there's a lot of other ways to look at it. I don't get too far down in the weeds on the, I was just saying, all we're gonna do is go through this.
But, yeah, no.
It's supposed to be a two-minute discussion.
Cause we're talking about capital.
I got my Grinch hat back.
No, we're, no, we're talking about capital here, so I, you know, I said the 5 million in general fund, but in addition to that, contingency in general is projected to be how much, 15 million, so. There's more than just that 5 million built up in general. There's, to me, there's about 20 million in reserves built up. I mean, not to me, but that's the fact. There's about 20 million in general fund built up in reserves, so. I think that needs to be taken into consideration for our need for, for our capital.
I think we can, yeah, we can discuss that, but I think, yeah, I think we've got money to do what we need to do. Sounds good to me. I'm up next, so I'm glad we got the money to do what we need to do.
No, for.
Yeah, but Harry, Harry. Oh, capital, oh. Harry's a Grinch today, so, man.
Oh, I took my hat back.
Oh, okay.
But if you want it again, you know, have some fun with it.
It doesn't fit me as well at 15, so.
I got it.
Anything else you wanna talk about?
No, thank you.
At this point, okay, all right. Okay. He's up for page.
Simple, just real simple, just approve it. Pretty much got everything we asked for, I think. There's a little discrepancy in the.
Well, I don't know where exactly where some of our, where your department requesting salary came up, but my budget salary, you just asked 4% colon, based on current salaries. I think you were maybe wanting a little extra.
I did, I sent out a merit, yeah. They read it, I guess, everybody read it.
Four thousand total, you're asking for merit that I did not put in the budget, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. For the three lowest paid in our office, yeah. But we'll always take more if it's general, it's whatever.
Everything else where I agreed with, where we have no, I mean, I know, and obviously next year's a big election.
Huge, yep.
expense year, but of course, we get some of that money back, though, too. Your revenues will be higher next year, too.
Well, the state pays their fair share now, most times, as long as they budget it, so that helps us a lot. So if the state budgets their money and we can collect on it for August and November, that half of the price of the election, that's a lot. So, yeah, it has changed a lot. Yeah, we're good on voting machines, so. Yeah, very good. Yeah, we're, we're. We actually ordered five more, uh, poll pads. We had, we had some money left in our grant money, so we ordered five more. So, every polling place should have at least two now. There were some places, smaller places only had one, or if it would happen to go down or something, they just, we were always printing the paper registers. Now they all have two, so. Hopefully, we won't have the long lines with the two weeks absentee voting either, so hopefully that'll help relieve some of the stress off our polling places. But I don't know if y'all remember in 2020, the weather was nice, thank God, because everybody was standing outside, cause you had to be six feet apart, so we had lines all the way out the building. So, I mean, it's crazy. Hopefully, that two weeks of no excuse absentee will alleviate some of those lines, and we can go a lot faster now with our new equipment, so. Other than that, the only other question I have is on the training that they were offering. If I should.
Oh, yeah.
Budget that somewhere, I mean, I can't pay for it out of my election services fund, cause it would be beneficial for us to be trained, I think. You know, when we do election worker training, if we had to supervise you training, then it would probably, we might have some pointers to rub off on that. So I don't really have a problem with using my election services fund for that anyway, so.
Training, like meeting, travel, dues, and that, sometimes training, that's kinda like training conferences, yeah. So, how much is that gonna cost? 300?
300 dollars? I think it's 145.
Right now, it's, we still don't have the numbers, so.
Oh.
It's 299 potential per person, but a lot of departments have said they won't participate. If it's that high, we're shooting for 249, if I can get five more people.
And I could use my election services fund, I think, for it. I think I could get that a lot. I have some money there, so I would like to.
I don't think the commissioner would be opposed to bumping your budget by 500 or whatever. Oh, how much?
It'd be 4,000 total for you if we're gonna cover all of it.
Well, I mean, for, for just for Steve's portion, yeah.
Easy now. I just wanna do two employees. Do, I'm a margin of error.
No, we're not doing that.
But, yeah, that's, I mean, that's a pretty easy adjustment, I think.
Yeah. Wherever you would put it in, I don't really know. Other than that.
Well, again, probably the meeting, travel, dues lines.
Put it in there, okay.
Training conference type money tends to normally goes.
It's really up to y'all. And we haven't got our grant money from the Secretary of State yet either, so that's usually 12, 13,000. So, if we get it, which we should be getting at any time, we're gonna use it for our postal canvas next year, so that would, I don't know, I think we got it in here for 15,000, but we wanna, we're gonna use it for that, so.
Do you have any trouble finding your poll workers?
We had a few that retired, so I don't know that it'll be an issue. The, the big election, presidential elections, we just have a lot of the party people step up. Like, we, we just call the central committee and just tell them we need people and they really send them out, so. As of right now, we have plenty, but never know. What are we paying? I think supervisors get 150 and the regular judges get 125. And plus, we pay them mileage. When gas prices were way up, we started paying mileage and it's hard to get away from that. But we did change it to where the, the first 10 miles are free. It's like, if they travel more than 10 miles, we pay them. Like, we have people that gotta go from here to Eugene, cause nobody in Eugene will work the polls, so we have to send people from here, which is not as bad, because they have to come back here anyway if they live here, so. But we still have to pay them 40 miles.
Right.
Twenty out, 20 back.
And, and locations are all locked in for, you do a good job, and most of them, most of them are churches?
Yep, most of them are churches.
And you pay 100 bucks a day? Is that what?
We pay 100 dollars, which is, you know, most of them, some of us don't charge us, like American Legion and the place out at St. Martin's, they don't really charge us for theirs, they don't. But the churches and stuff, we pay 100 dollars to. We don't have to pay at Blair Oaks or Eugene School District, anything tax dollars, we don't have to pay for. But so far, we just sent our letter out to all of them, telling them to reserve the dates for next year. And so, we send that out to our election judges, making sure they reserve the dates and all of our polling places to reserve the dates. And if there's any issues or problems, well, then they'll let us know. So we should be knowing in the next 30 days or so. But so far, everything's locked in.
Good.
I guess one other change, you're, you're asking for part-time, 4,000 part-time salary. That's, again, because of the election year and you've got a.
Well.
Part-time person that.
So normally, we don't really know what to expect with the two weeks of no excuse absentee. We may, I mean, there's no way we can do our regular work and stand and work the window all day. I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna have lines. So we're probably gonna have to have two people just to do the voting people come in here above early. It was really busy last year.
Yeah.
Just people constantly, and I don't know where we're gonna put them all if it's, yeah, cause it's presidential election, so it's gonna be crazy, but we're gonna have to figure out. But we're probably gonna have to have two people to stand at the window and just vote people constantly all day. So we'll hire some election judges to do that generally. Generally, if it's, if it's not too busy, we just pay them out of our election fund, and we don't really take taxes or anything out of them. We just pay them as an election worker, cause that's what they are. Cause they can earn up to, what is it, 16, 1700 dollars tax-free, don't have to pay taxes on, if they're doing election work. So we just hire them as an election judge, but they're actually doing the judge here at our window. So, I don't know if we'll use that money or we'll run it through elections, it depends. You know, they actually make less money if we run it through payroll, because then they have all the taxes and stuff taken out, I guess. Oh, they, well, like Diane was, oh, they don't, okay. So Diane was being our part-time helper all the time.
Part-time helper, that's different, but all the election workers, she can payroll, but they won't pay you taxes, so they use that money.
Right. So our part-time, now, if we hired her part-time, you would take taxes out of her, yeah. So, that's why we were paying them through election judge, because that's really what they're doing, election judges.
But then they're, they have different definitions, that they work on the election day, they don't work like weeks before the election.
Right. And I'm not sure how Boone, Kenny, them do it. They, they actually have different places where they set up absentee voting. Like, they'll set it up on one end of town for two or three days, and then they'll move it to a different place for two or three days. And so it's kinda, I mean, I don't know how they notify people where it's at all the time, cause it would just be horrible.
Guess I'm just too old-fashioned. I like the idea of voting on the election day where you're supposed to vote.
I do, too, yeah.
And that's another thing they do, is they, they, in a small elections, like in an April election, we don't have the big turn. And that's another thing they do, is they, they, in a small elections, like in an April election, where you don't have the big turnout, they combine their polling places, but they send out mail beforehand telling everybody where to go vote. So I've considered doing that, but it's always confusing when you change people's place to vote, so.
Yeah.
And then it costs money to mail all that out, too. But Boone County, before every election, they mail out a sample ballot to everybody that's registered to vote, and it tells them where to go vote. And they don't have, like, we have twenty-eight polling places, well, they may have only fourteen open.
They mail out an actual ballot to everybody?
A, a sample ballot. A, a sample ballot out, show them what they're gonna vote on, and tells them where to go vote.
Yeah, I'm not saying do that at all, I mean, I think that's your own responsibility to figure that stuff out.
That sam, that sample ballot that goes out is, is not unique to this voter versus that, it's all the same for the, you know, when you put it in the paper, you've got every measure, and a lot of, if, if it's a school district I'm in, I don't vote, I don't care, but I see it, right?
You send it out, but it's a smaller version, like it'd be on a letter.
But they send it out for the, every election, I mean, every ballot measure that's there is gonna be on there, interesting.
Yep, because, you know, the election we just had with the library, I had so many people say, we didn't even know there was an election, we didn't know there was an election. They didn't know there was an election, going, well, we put it, we're required to put it in the paper, you know, and I put, we put it on our website, and people still are not informed, I, how do you inform them unless you mail them?
You talk, you're talking about the August election we had?
Yeah.
Well, you know, August in an even-numbered, odd-numbered years is, is unusual.
It is, yeah.
But that was by design, I guess.
Sure, yeah. But people, I mean, they were just upset, because they didn't know there was an election.
Well, read the paper.
I know, one lady said, I don't get the paper, I said, well, we put it on Facebook, she said, I don't know, I'm not Facebook, I'm like, well, what do you mean to do? I don't know, so, she was not very happy, but I'm like, what do you, I mean, I don't know what to do, other than mail something, a postcard to everybody, every election, but then you're talking, what, twenty grand? I mean, what's, what's a postcard? We have fifty, three or fifty-four thousand registered voters, so.
Yeah, you said a postcard, most people would just throw it away.
I didn't win the lottery, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's just like, what do you do, I don't know what to do.
Soon as you figure out how to make everybody happy, let me know.
Alex, get, get everybody out to vote.
You just gotta get everybody to buy the newspaper.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll give him more responsibility.
So any questions on the merit raises, or any, anything there?
No, I think the, the cola raises included in the budget, Mark presented, and we'll take a look at the merit requests.
Perfect.
Yep.
Any other election-related questions?
Who's gonna win?
Yeah. No comment, yeah, I don't know, I don't know who's gonna win, I don't even know who's running yet.
Oh, I forget, are we, we prior state still, or we not?
No. Nope, they're gonna caucus, I guess, in April, March or April, I think, I had the date wrote down. They want, they use our, our poll pads to make sure people are registered to vote, so. I think it was sometime in. I know it, yeah. All right, Harry, you still thinking there, or?
No, I think you answered all my questions, and you gave some info to Alex about what it costs. We do have poll workers for the most part.
So far, we have, yeah.
I really admire those people, and it's not, you know, it's, it's, you see the same faces when you vote. It's usually where I go vote, it's, it's the same fellows and gals working, it's, it's refreshing to see them come back.
Totally.
And, and I tell you, with your technology now, it is so easy to sign in, and electronically, they've got you there, they already know who you are, and it's pretty cool.
It goes pretty quick.
Yeah.
You know, we have our reg, regular election judges that work every election, our two Democrats or two Republicans work every one. And then like August and November, we'll fill in, you know, where we have four people, we'll have eight, you know, we'll have, you know, maybe more than that, depends on how big the precinct is, so. So it'll, it'll be so smooth. Any problems, no, no voting COVID positive patients on the street or anything like that, this time, so, hopefully. All right, thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Mark, thanks.
Got Mr. Nick?
You ready for Nick?
Are we taking?
No, it's up to you, next year, we keep going. I'm ready. You keep going?
Hammer away.
Yeah.
This one shouldn't be too long, anyways.
No, 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 no.
We've allowed you a half hour, why do I allow you so much time?
Well, you know, I'll be, I'll talk fast, that's all that's. Well, good morning, Commission.
Page eighty-four. In your blue heminal. Everybody, please join hands, and let's sing together.
Yeah, again, I, there, I, just really no differences in what my recommended versus yours, except maybe just, no, even salaries, that's right, you're, you're, yeah, okay, so, no?
Yeah, the, the only thing I noticed, of course, is kind of what Steve was mentioning with, with merit, I wanted to, but it sounds like you guys already have that taken care of, or, or.
Did you require, you didn't, you didn't actually request a merit?
Oh, I thought, I thought I put in three hundred, and that was taken out, but that was, right, it was a very small amount, yeah, I mean, there's just one.
Yeah, three hundred dollars, yeah, okay, that's, that's all the difference, yeah, okay.
Did we get a copy of that, or? For the merit?
I, I can, I'll have it all available or send it to you before the workshops, or here, well, let me bring it.
Okay, I didn't get one from everybody, but some of them had sent us emails outlining their merit requests.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Request in here somewhere.
I was just trying to keep a separate list of those, I know you all are as well, so between the bunch of us, we should be able to get it all together at the end.
When I get it from Mark, it'll be on your commission budget for thirty-four.
That one, I'll remember, that one was the one that was kind of out of date, so, yeah, I can, I can.
Don't have that one on.
Yeah, I can, I can amend that and send it to you if you need to, Mark, I can get that done today.
All right, I'll just make a note that you had a merit request on there, and then when we get to it.
Okay. But you're absolutely right, a majority of this is the exact same, in fact, equipment service contract is, is going down from last year. There, there is some things that have been added, the majority of, of that contract looks like a crisis track, paying for that for, for next year is what I added into the budget, and so that's, that's kind of the, the difference, but that went down three thousand. And then the only other request I would have, going back to the salaries line item, is I know we've had talks with the city, and it just has not come to fruition with their safety committee, and I prepped last May, I prepped the city council, and of course, we've had a change of city council, so I would still request, even though that would not be EMPG-supported, a deputy director position, and so that's, that would change some things as well, if that position wasn't.
We've kind of had it in last year, contingent on the city paying their portion, too.
Yes, sir.
And so I think.
Well, and the state portion.
Yeah, yeah, so I think depending on.
I, just like last year, same, this is how it was approved last year, and it's in there also, fifty thousand, approved only of seventy-five percent funded, meaning city and state.
Well, and the state would not, I mean, that's, that's already been applied for and, and denied, and so the state would not have any, it would have to be fifty-fifty through city-county, and they did not add that to their October budget, and, so that's kind of where, where I lie with that, is, it's unfortunately, though, we missed the grant opportunity, because that would have carried on with us. My belief, and of course, I don't know for certain, but my belief is if we were to have that position and apply for that as a existing position, because it exists within EMPG, then EMPG would then fund that next year, but I can't guarantee that.
Aren't they cutting back a lot of your funding, though, so I, that's not a gamble, I think I'd be wanting to throw out there, add to employee, and then, you know, hope that it got funded.
Well, it wouldn't be funded in, in total, you're correct, anyway.
But I mean, I think they're just, they're making cuts on a lot of your funding, so I don't, I think if we had somebody now, I don't think they're gonna come in and say, oh, well, let's go ahead and take care of fifty percent of that, I just, I don't see that happening, especially when they're cutting back already.
And, and I can totally disagree with you, because they have made some substantial cuts, and especially cuts to things that I didn't anticipate, which, like our, um, the, uh, benefits package was substantially cut, you know, so we're not getting fifty percent of that this year, like we did last year, and really for years and years and years, you know, so. There's always been some fluctuation in the line items, but, you know, again, I, I can't tell you how long EMPG is gonna last.
So we provide hazmat services for Camden County?
Yes, this is the events that we support, they have their bike race, and then their boat races and their bike show.
Okay.
And this was an agreement that is a gentleman's agreement between the Camden County hazmat team had disbanded, and so we provide those services, and so they, they pay us that amount, and we did receive our check for five thousand this year.
Okay.
Any other questions, or?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Okay.
See, I told you it'd be easy.
Oh, I know.
Okay, we're a half hour, we're a half hour ahead.
Half hour.
You have to give me fifteen minutes, then I'll talk real slow, that's, that's how that always works, well, thank you all very much.
That's when the red pin comes out, though.
Let's take a quick break, then, do we wanna?
I'll get hold of Eric, Larry, and Ralph. You can't call in, okay. And that's it, just those three?
I got your new chair.
Well, now's the time to ask for one.
How about yours? Okay.
Two, three, that's what.
Okay.
So there are no changes?
Well, zero.
Right, it's been zero, yes, right, so it's tech.
I think Eric is.
Hey, how's it going?
No?
Eric, sorry.
Sorry, you stay right there.
So you're having fun?
I had a lot of fun.
A lot, a lot, yeah. You had fun? Now another high V-Jack, was that a gift to you?
I, I mean.
Oh, did?
This is more say. Said I worked like the day after, like I did last year, because I was pulled down, so I just made my computer.
Oh, that's right, you were in school. Yeah. By the fourteenth, fifteenth will be a little more interesting.
Fine, thank you. We got both here, but we can't bear to let it say that, okay?
Year before Larry, so.
Okay.
We'll stay in, in order.
We'll all take our LBS.
You got it. You got your Grinch up there?
No, it's broken, it's the home on my workbench.
How do you break a Grinch?
Never mind.
The normal question is, why do you have a Grinch?
We know how you have a Grinch.
He's just sitting in his chair.
It's coming in.
Is it coming in?
Hey, uh.
Now's not the time, right?
Mark? I actually like having these in a binder.
I'm glad, because.
Hey, whose idea was that?
Aw, you didn't tell me that. I do like this, it used to be in a big binder.
Okay, well, I'm glad, because almost everybody I've given.
And then we went to the bound ones, and this way we can take our emails or notes from somebody else and load them in each area if you want to, or whatever.
Everybody I've talked to likes this better, so this was, I was done this.
The last one for that thing.
I'll be a Grinch, I don't like them.
It was a great idea, it had to be a genius to think of this.
Yeah, which made it easier, but. But if everybody likes this, then.
There's what it used to be like, so, that's what I was centered on, how did we just get that in that small of a binder?
All right, we will.
Of course, they had those all tapped and everything, of course.
All right, what pages?
Okay, the county treasure on page is twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine, let's see, we just had the three changes from last year on bonds, our insurance, publications, and communications, since you yanked our fax line out of our office, after talking to them.
Oh, you know what, I've been, wanted to ask other departments if they got unlisted fax lines in their office that are not being used much, if at all, do you really need to keep them, because that's obviously old, uh, kind of old dated technology, and those costs.
The fax lines cost quite a bit more than just your, just a regular phone line, so, anyway.
You may want to check with Brian, too, because those became the nine-one-one call lines, too, because we don't really have them. Everybody has PRI numbers, so it's kind of hard, so we're using the fax, so it's just, you might want to check with Brian.
Is that to account for the whole drop from six eighty to two hundred, or is that, all that's fax?
Their phone bill's gonna go from like seven hundred almost to two hundred next year, so that is a drop in fax line, yeah. There we go, every little bit.
Uh, let's see, do y'all have any questions?
No.
Okay.
So do you get your Wall Street journal sent here to the courthouse?
No, I haven't. No, I have it sent to my, uh, driveway.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm thinking of letting mine last.
So that, um, when you, when someone buys a subscription to the Wall Street Journal, do they also get, um, the internet version?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which is good because our deliverers suck so bad. I spend about half the time on the internet anyway because they don't deliver it guaranteed once or twice a week. It doesn't even show up.
They mail it to me. I got so mad that, that it's actually mailed and I get, you know, today is Tuesday. I get Tuesdays in the mail.
On Tuesday?
Uh-huh.
Well, I mean, it's a good enough paper. If I got it on Wednesday and Thursday, I'd still read it, but that's even better to get.
Remember, we used to get the paper in the afternoons anyway, so. Back in the old days. And then it went to the mornings and now we get it in the mail and we can't handle that getting in the afternoon.
Well, our mail is, is kind of erratic when we're gonna get it, but really it's Saturday is still the best paper.
It is, for sure. Eric?
I was gonna, so, uh, does one, uh, subscription equal one electronic subscription?
Yes.
And I, I was just trying to piggyback on to.
Right.
What you do, uh, or what, what the treasurer's office pays for. Is there anyone else at the county can benefit from that?
Uh, I think if I wanted to give my credentials out to somebody, they could access it, but I.
Well, I don't, not asking for that, but.
Right.
Okay.
But other than that, it's not available to.
The Netflix should do that, too.
No. Not asking, I'm not asking to break any rules. Okay.
Yeah. But it's worth every penny. It's been, it's been.
Invest in your papers.
It is, yeah. Well, that, you know, the Financial Times, actually, it's a British paper, which is also has a lot of, uh, financial news about US markets, particularly, uh, US debt instruments, treasuries, agencies, that sort of stuff. That's been, uh, another bulwark for me to kind of keep up on my education on, uh, on making the right decisions on our financial, uh, on our portfolio. So, I mean, I know Mark probably doesn't read it every day and he's informed enough that, that we can make decisions without it, but it's certainly a level of comfort. Uh, I took my series seven years ago. That helped a lot in keeping up. Uh, you, I mean, you want a county treasurer that understands, you know, how to invest that money and, uh, take advantage of trends, that sort of stuff, so, anyway.
Well, we, we have a lot, we, we have a fair amount of money to invest and the return is, is pretty darn good right now with just the, with the treasuries.
He's headed south pretty shortly. There's an article into the front page of the Wall Street Journal saying that derivatives are already predicting and, um, they're predicting that the treasury, not the treasury, the Federal Reserve will start cutting rates probably in February, March, April of next year, the way things are going, which means our five-plus percent rates are gonna go away in the next quarter. So I've talked with Mark at length about it. We're gonna stretch out as far as we can, as money, as.
Yeah, lots of them, a little bit longer.
Yes.
Still stagger them, but lock them in for.
Yeah. I'd like to get one or two out to three years and grab that 5% while it's still available. But, but that may or may not be possible at the beginning of the year. I'll just have to work with Mark on that, so.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as, something like that, though, I think would get the commission.
Well, I, I like the latter.
Eric and I have been working together mainly, um, you know, on the shorter, you know, here's, here's what's available, here's what's in the bank, but, you know, what funds have money that we can invest, access money. And we've, we've, we've been working, we work together on that, but, uh, to go out more than, uh, really more than about a year, year and a half, I'd, I'd prefer to get, get your.
I've been doing, I did some two years.
If you're okay with that.
And treasury notes and.
At, at least notify them in advance.
Absolutely. What I wanted to do this coming year is coming, I think I've talked to Harry about it and Sam, I don't think I've talked to Jeff about it, is the idea of grabbing a few more, uh, points on interest, uh, basis points by going to agencies, federal agencies, uh, which are backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government. These are not government-sponsored entities like Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. I'm not talking about those, but they're available at the trading desk at Central Bank, uh, and they're as good as the US treasuries and they provide a higher rate, especially if we go with some callables. Say you go out a year or two and it's a callable note, you're gonna get a higher yield than if you just did, let's say, a two-year treasury, but there's a chance that it may get called in, which means you have to, it gets purchased and then you get your principal and the interest that's due on it. So it doesn't go out the full two years.
Right.
But at least for the period of time that you own it, that you have it in your possession, you're, you're capturing a higher rate of interest than you would on a US treasury. So we'll talk about that later.
Okay.
What I did wanna mention, I did a quick research last night on, um, this regards salaries for all county employees. I know you all are looking at a roughly.
5% right now, is what I got.
Right. And so I went out and just did a quick search on, uh, PCE, the personal consumption expenditure, and CPI, the consumer price index. And here are four numbers, uh, you all might find interesting. The 12-month mean PCE is 3.85%. The US Department of Labor has the CPI right now, consumer price index, at 3.70 for 2023. The core PCE year over year is 3.70. And the St. Louis Federal Reserve Bank has the 2023 inflation rate at 3.6%. And I don't know if that's a CPI or PCE, but, you know, if you all lean towards a, a 4%, certainly with the inflation that we're still enduring, it makes, it makes sense. So FYI, that's more of an FYI.
Thank you.
Have you ever heard of the MOSIP?
Yes.
What's, is that a good program? We got a board that's looking at it, using that for some of the monies that we have sitting in there.
So MOSIP is simply gonna be, we purchase our treasuries through, are you talking about the treasuries? Did they offer the treasury with?
Just the whole program for political entities and, and, and school districts, municipalities and stuff?
I think it's a very good program.
Okay. We don't use them, though, do we?
We, well, no, because the, um, the county councillor has made it clear that our only available, uh, path for debt instrument investing is through the trading desk at Central Bank. And I adhere to that.
That's fine. I was just, we had looked at this through a different board and.
You know, I've looked, I, I get their, uh, rates every two weeks and the MOSIP rates are competitive, what we get with the bank. All you're doing is you're trading the fee you would pay Central Bank for, let's say, a two-year note, US treasury, with the fee you would pay MOSIP for whatever they purchased on your behalf.
They basically administer it.
Exactly, yeah.
Latter it however you wanna.
But I think for, um, for counties in particular that don't have, like I said, a debt, uh, let's say a, a county treasurer that understands debt instruments and what's available, MOSIP is just, it's a real easy thing to hop on and goes through their personnel, which I assume on the, on the phone, that they're very easy to work with. And, um, I think that's a real high comfort factor for, let's say, let's say, second, third and fourth class counties. That's, MOSIP is probably, uh, the right way to go. Those that are a little more sophisticated and want to keep hands on themselves, using your depository's trading desk is the way to go. So I think we've got it, we've got it right. If you all want me to explore the rate differences with MOSIP and talk to, um, well, we have to change our investment policy to go through MOSIP, I think.
No, I'm, I mean, I, I actually kind of like being more hands-on and we've got more control of it myself, but if this was just a different thing, so our executive director or whatever.
Right.
We've gone through. Sound Waste Management Board and they.
Yeah.
We got money sitting there and it's not making squat at the, where we've got it. So we're looking at different options and this came up.
Right.
I thought I'd heard about it before, but apparently.
Doesn't Mac endorse MOSIP? Don't they have an endorsement? That's an endorsed product of, uh, the Missouri Association of Counties, I think.
They think so.
Yeah. I've heard nothing but good things about it.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yep, welcome.
Hey, stick your Wall Street Journal in, in our mailbox. We're, we're paying for your subscription.
Last I heard, yes, sir.
Okay. I could get it, 'cause I think mine expires like in January. God, that's up to 600 and some dollars. It's about the cheapest I can get it.
Okay, my daughter Maya likes to use to draw cartoons on, but I'll do my best. I'm not responsible for any marginality about that, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Grinch.
That's right, I'm the Grinch. You all are Santa Claus. There really aren't many differences between what Mark's, uh, budget is and what I'm requesting. I would point out that the one main difference is in, in salaries. I have requested a, a modest increase in.
Right. And actually, I just got your schedule up that you're asking for. Your, uh, 4% call up plus you're asking for an additional, what?
$1,500 merit, yes.
4,500.
I don't know that I've, uh, ever asked for a increase at budget time. I think in light of what the county has done for other departments this year, it's, it's hard for our, all the other county employees, not just in my department, to sit back and think that they're not working hard for the county and, and don't deserve an increase in their pay also, besides the cost of living increase. So I, I'd like to stress that more than anything else. I only have three full-time employees in my department. It's $4,500, which is a drop in the bucket as far as I'm concerned. I bring in, uh, looks like the estimated revenue this year's $1,290,700. Of that collector's commission is projected to be $1,150,000. And that collector's commission is really designed to run the collector's department, the collect, collector's office. So out of that $1,150,000, uh, my budget, as I propose, it would only be $444,736. So still $600,000 in surplus revenue going to County GR. So I think it, that alone shows that there's adequate funds there to increase it by that amount. The only other two line items that have a couple thousand dollar increase is printing and postage. Postage, we get, got really hit hard this year and actually went up about $10,000. We split that, split that with the assessor's office, uh, the overall postage bill. I, I still don't have it yet, but we'll know what that is shortly.
Hey, Larry, did the, uh, did the real estate tax bills go out separately than the personal property tax bills this year?
A lot of them did. Uh, we did the name match we did last year, well, we just did address matches last year and it ended up being a problem because we had children that were still living at home getting their tax bills in with their parents' tax bills and it created issues, uh, family issues, you know, arguments between, uh, parents and their kids because they went, were mailed together.
Got it.
Uh, this year we went with an exact match and the, and the issue is that a lot of personal property just is in one name, like the husband's name only. And then the real estate is in the legal name, the husband's legal name and the wife's name, so that didn't come out as a match. I think we'll probably try to find something in between that for next year to get a better, uh, way of bundling those together. But that, a lot of them did go separate and that was.
Yeah, I got two for those.
I, I noticed, uh, and they, they came maybe one day apart or something and that, that's what made me notice it. Uh, is there, will there ever be a time, uh, when that comes electronically?
We started electronic billing this year. Uh, you could sign up for it. It was, there was a thing in your bills last year saying you could sign up. There might have been something again this year.
It came with the personal property one, but I don't know if I saw it with the real estate one. Maybe, maybe you did.
I don't know.
I have mine separate. I think I had that slip in both.
Oh, you did, okay.
But we're, we did, I think, probably around 1,000 electronic this year. Were both the real estate, well, and that was, they signed, when people signed up, they may have only signed up for the personal property and we didn't make the assumption that they wanted them both that way. We're changing that. So if one, they sign up for one, they're gonna get them both, uh, as well as the assessment form electronically. So I don't know how many assessment forms we did, but we did about 1,000 real estate and personal property tax bills. And we look to grow that every year.
Makes sense.
And, and hopefully that will help reduce the cost of postage. So again, that's, my tax maintenance fund, uh, it won't have near what it's showing over there, um, mainly because of expenses we're, we're going to have probably shortly after the first of the year for a bunch of upgrades that are probably gonna be in the $100,000 range. So I think that fund brings in, I don't know.
And 100,000 a year, maybe a little more.
I thought it was less than that, but that could be, I didn't check it.
2022 brought in 114,000. This year, I'm projecting. Those projections are, I don't know how obvious now that some of those projections.
A lot of, you know, a lot of, a lot of my budget items are kind of crapshoots because we don't know what the delinquent tax, how many properties are gonna be on that. That influences what our professional fees are for title searches and what our newspaper ad cost is. But those are the best guess estimates that, that we have and they, they're always been pretty, pretty darn close, so hopefully we'll stay in good with that. But as I said, my main concern is, is a, um, modest pay raise for my staff. I would certainly hope that you would give that a lot of consideration, as well as the rest of the county staff.
Yep, just like we told everybody else earlier, I, I agree with you. It is a modest ask and, but we're gonna kind of pencil that in at, at the end and see where that puts everybody. So definitely want to take into consideration for trying to retain our good employees, so.
I think mine really showed their armor around the office for.
I think everybody's been able to.
Wonderful.
I think everybody's been, put up a pretty good argument for their employees and so, yeah, I'm not gonna discount any of them.
Other than that, if you don't have any other questions, I appreciate your time and if you have, anything comes up, just let me know.
We know where to find you. Because you're usually there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
I like the binder also.
Scored 100% on that, yeah.
Well, we can reuse them.
I think they cost a buck at least.
That's called sustainability. You can reuse them, right?
Yeah.
I just didn't like them before because they were so big. Like I said, they were these two-inch, three-inch binders.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
Oh, you put that all in a paper, right? Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay, public administrator.
Last but not least, you're, you're gonna end the day for us.
Yeah, you're, we get to go watch.
I have them for 30?
Well, till 1:00 technically.
Depends on, depends on how much red ink I have here. I think your time limit is, uh, 15 minutes, so we'll, uh.
So what do you want to?
So you're gonna navigate?
Oh, my goodness, you have a full half hour.
I'll pull up, let's see, you, uh, pulled this, this one, probably.
If I stand and speak, will that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is that what you want up on the board?
Uh, no.
No?
I was gonna go by this.
Oh, okay, you just want that, okay.
Yeah.
Well, everybody's got that in front of them, so we'll. Oh, well, no, here, let, let me pull it up.
54, 55.
I will pull it up for sure.
Because I think that was adjusted a little bit.
So, okay. So bring up your actual budget, yeah?
I bought a brand new.
I bought a brand-new $12 pointer to use.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
You used your own money, or did you...
It don't work on that TV, I don't think.
I used the own money.
Oh, you could see some of it.
My shirts, which I'll get into later, but I use county money for that.
Okay, so you want your, this is your actual budget that I've got up. Is that what you want?
Well, that's, here's what I was going by. Don't I talk about the 2024 budget?
Yeah, yeah. It's a little different, but it's the same. It's got the same columns.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, it don't work on the TV. I learned that, Ralph. I was very disappointed too.
I'm going to turn it back. I hope I saved my receipt. I don't use them for anything else. Okay, the first thing I want to discuss, again, interrupt me at any time if you have questions. I have one question to begin with, though. I saw your email, Mark, about a budget workshop. Did we do that last year? Because I don't recall. I must have missed it.
Yeah, we probably didn't call it a workshop.
Maybe not a workshop, but it's, it's when, we have two days of budget hearings scheduled. We schedule each department head, and then it's normally been about a week later. Now it's going to be about two weeks later. Where the commission, we go through line by line pretty much, and they tell me, yeah, yea, nay, whatever.
That's when we're naughty and nice.
Is that what I need to be here?
You don't have to, but I'm going to try and, I've had a lot of requests the last two years. Well, especially last year, if you could let me know when you're going to discuss my budget, please let me know.
Okay, yeah, I'm insured, I'm available.
We'll try and do that again this year, yeah.
I don't recall doing anything more over above what we're doing here last year. That's all I'm asking.
And if you bring donuts, we'll be...
We've done the presentation, just a general presentation, pretty much every year.
Yeah.
And then we get down into weeds later on.
Yeah.
This is for the public consumption, right?
Well, it all is.
Yeah, that's all, it's all...
The next one is an advertised public hearing, isn't it? When we adopt it, that's a public hearing.
That's just, that's just...
I know, but isn't that when we say to the public, show up?
They can't.
That's called the public hearing.
Yes, right.
Now you're having...
Workshop.
Budget hearings.
Workshop hearings. But, you know, it's a public, it's got to be...
Matter of fact, I mean, before we adopted, we asked for the, we asked, is there public? Anyone here want to talk about it? Usually, there isn't.
Right.
But we have to give them the opportunity.
Right, that's usually the...
The January.
That's the first week of January.
January 4th, I think.
Hearing and then adoption of the final...
I think the statute requires it by the 15th. Unless you have a new commissioner, it's the 30th or 31st.
I can't remember the exact day, but yeah, you got a...
You get a little bit longer when you have a rookie commissioner.
But we never come by that.
You said the 4th is what you sent out to us.
Yeah, we try to do it as early as possible in January so we can...
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I think this is similar.
I'll be available, and if there's anything else you need, let me know. Okay, the first line item I want to talk about is the fees. And I know that it's county revenue. And I still don't have all of my data back from our G file yet. I know that Brian and his staff are working on it. And I don't know when I'm going to get that back, but I'm missing a lot of information to justify and document in case somebody would contest any fees I have charged some of our clients. And I definitely don't want to go down that rabbit hole. So if that stuff is not materialized by the end of the year, for this year, I think my fees are going to be quite a bit lower. And that's why I budgeted a little bit less for next year versus the...
Well, you can see here, I'll put my cursor up. This is your year-to-date. That's the actual number, so it's really low.
Yeah, but we hardly know it started until December.
Right, right.
So that's why I still get too concerned about that number.
Right, right. I understand.
And then the other thing is, a lot of, how do I want to put this and be politically correct? A lot of my more affluent clients have passed away this year. And the fees are based upon what the net worth of my clients are. And I don't assess fees on indigent clients or on clients who have like maybe $2,000 to their name. I just don't think ethically or morally that's the correct thing to do. Unfortunately, that number is going up quite a bit. So that's why I'm anticipating not having the sources to tap into to assess fees that would accumulate to 80,000 like I was shooting for this year. Okay, let's talk about the salaries. That, I think, is my biggest increase. I'm assuming a 4% COLA increase. I'm also asking for a merit increase for each of my three deputies of $750. To justify that, let's start with my chief deputy. So when we had our data issue with the server, she worked with Jefferson Bank to come up with a process whereby they printed cashier checks for all of my clients and for all of the service providers that we had to pay rent to every month. And that worked out quite well. And she actually came up with that idea along with Alex Bennett and Jefferson Bank. And so because of what Aaron was able to concoct temporarily, we really didn't miss a beat on making sure our clients and our service providers got their money. It may have been a day or two late, but every day, I would make a bank run to Jefferson Bank on the West End, pick up the cashier checks we had ready that day, get them back, process them in our estate management system, and then get them up here in time to be mailed out. So that worked pretty good. And Aaron came up with that idea, and I think that was a significant factor why we really didn't miss much of a beat during this data breach. As far as my other deputy, Amy, goes, I had taken some of the duties from the chief deputy and distributed them to Amy and Caitlin because Aaron makes client visits like I do, not nearly as many, but some she does. And so she's tied up quite a bit with clients ever since I came on board than what she used to be. Amy does all of the annual settlements, and that's a monthly, every month chore that she took on this year. And she's doing a very good job with that. Client settlements are required by the state statute. She's got to file them in CaseNet. She's got to make sure all of the receipts and all of the income are accounted for. And she's got to balance everything out. Then I review each one and sign off, and then you go to Judge Green. And that is a new function, a new requirement, a new task that she's been doing very ably. Takes a lot of her time. So that's one of the reasons why I am hopeful that she will get a merit increase. As far as Caitlin goes, she does all of the annual status reports that I am required to file to Judge Green in CaseNet for all of our clients. A status report simply shows the number of visits I've made to our clients, the date of the last visit, the date of their last psychiatrist's visit, and their PCP visit. There's a lot of data in there. And that was transferred from our chief deputy down to Caitlin. And she's been doing an admirable job of that, doing a very good job. And then the other thing, and Debbie, I think I emailed you the initial invoice for that web-based management system last week. It was $1,200 when the commissioners approved. So last week, we started with that new web-based system, the state management system, which I call EMS. We now do on the web. We don't do it through our county server. We just started that last week, and we're still in training. We got off to a really great start. We haven't missed a beat. Those three deputies have really kicked it up a notch, so to speak. And they really got into the process, and now they're into their challenging phase where they have to train me on how to navigate through the system, which I know they're not looking forward to. But anyway, they're doing a really good job of that. And of course, I try to impress upon you all and everybody I come in contact with the profound role that these three play when they're talking to clients on a daily basis. Because most of these clients have mental health issues, sometimes they're suicidal. And by the way, my chief deputy and I have been trained on what is called mental health first aid. If we are the first person to talk to somebody who is suicidal, we've been trained on how to deal with those individuals, what to tell them, what to document and everything. And that has actually turned out to be very beneficial. And Aaron really grabbed hold of that and does a great job. So I think I have enough justification for their merit increases. I think $750 for the whole year. And the way I figure it, after taxes and everything, is probably about $47 extra that goes in their paycheck.
Ralph, see, I use you as an example all the time where you eliminated a position and then gave more responsibility to your three, and we gave them more money. Did we use the entire salary, the one that we terminated or that we replaced, did we use that entire salary to give to these three, or was there still...
I don't think so.
Was there still extra money? Because then you could maybe justify the $750.
Incremental amount, which what I thought was appropriate. Of course, they would have liked more, and that's...
So we would still be less on salaries even if we did that by having eliminated the one position?
Yeah, not only that, it could infringe benefits, whatever.
Okay, okay. Well, I just, I've used, I think, I've told other people about that. And I said, well, you can do what, do what the public administrator did, and he eliminated...
Then another department's due.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're going to eliminate it and just move it somewhere else, though, it's not changing a whole lot.
Well, but if it's still less than what the fourth employee, what we were paying for that, then...
Yeah, and I would agree, Sam. The bottom line is, if you give them that merit increase, that additional $750 a year, I mean, we're still coming out, the county is still coming out ahead. I mean, I don't have numbers, but you got to be, because on that one annual salary infringement benefits have been eliminated versus the incremental increase we gave them last year.
All right, just...
Okay, let's see.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sure we didn't use it all.
Question?
No, good.
Jeff, question?
No, Sam and I were talking behind your back.
No wonder my ears hurt.
Don't worry, it's recorded. There wasn't anything bad.
Okay, salaries. This is where the $14,007, that's where the new web-based monthly cost comes in with SEM applications. You all see that?
I think specifically that's...
Equipment service contract.
Yeah, 13-284, just for that.
That's a big portion of that. They charge on a monthly basis, I think it was $450 per active client that's in their database. And right now, we have like 247. And that will fluctuate if I have clients that die off. I don't get new ones, or if I get new ones and I don't have any die off. But it's roughly, what, 1,300 a month, whatever that total was. So that's the new significant increase in my budget for them going from the county server to the web-based estate management system that allows us to file through that system with CaseNet to track all of our clients' healthcare decisions and notes and expenses. It allows us to do our annual settlements, our status reports. It's a lot simpler, actually a lot more efficient. So that's where that big cost went. And I think I put in extra money for office supplies. And then let's go back to meeting travel dues. So I'm getting more proactive with Region Six of Missouri Association of Public Administrators. And probably within a year, I will be an officer or something like that, which will require me to do a little bit more traveling to meetings and stuff like that. So I put in a little bit of extra money there in case that happens next year. If it doesn't, probably only here. Office supplies, I've increased. My first two years in office, the shirts that I bought with the logos and everything, I paid for out of my own pocket. I took my old jackets from FedEx and Unilever and JNCO, and I had the county logo put on them. But this year, I also asked the ladies if they would consider wearing something with the county logo. Of course, they agreed to do that, and that had a very positive benefit, I think. You know, it really promotes camaraderie and teamwork and pride in what they do in that office down there. And next year, I'm probably going to replace my outerwear with some new jackets and stuff like that. And I don't know if you have a line item for uniforms, do you?
Not for your department, but we can add that.
No, no, that's fine. I'm just explaining. That's why the office supply...
Where do they come from, countywide? I mean, we see everybody's got, maybe not everybody, but we got a lot of them. So do we, does everybody kind of pick and choose where they want to get them from, or do we?
Yeah, I ask around if we had a county supplier who did them all, but apparently we don't.
I know a lot of them have their own funds that take care of it.
I go to, I go to Jeff Delong on, down Dry Creek, what's that called?
Yeah.
Custom. They changed their name a little bit.
Something.
Yeah, custom, it's something, custom something else now.
Yeah, and I've been going to Shirt Smith.
And I just started there during the election, and I've bought some since like this.
Yeah, I'm sure these are more than what my chief deputy got off of Amazon for them. But I mean, I know the owner of this guy. He's turned it over to his daughters, and they've always done a good job for me. But anyway, that's why that number is higher. So Mark, I know you've looked over this. Is there any other I need to address? I mean, vehicle operation, that's a crapshoot. I mean, I've spent thousands of dollars this year.
I actually did have it.
That actually occurred at the end of 2022. You see, your actual was over 10,000. This year, you're running, you're running pretty low still, 2702.
I don't think I got the invoice from Public Works for new tires, for new brakes.
Oh, you got more coming, yeah.
And tune up and some other work.
I just had a note to ask you, is the vehicle, vehicle working okay?
Oh, yeah, it's running fine, no issues.
Okay.
Let's go to the park right in front of me there at the lake.
I have, I had a couple questions, not so much a dollar amount, but just general questions. The other one was on, when you first came in or shortly thereafter, I would call it a hiccup with the IRS. Is that hiccup?
To my knowledge, it's been resolved.
Perfect, okay.
Now, I say that, we all know the IRS. I may get, I may get a notification tomorrow about a tax return or two...
Right.
Twenty from last year.
No, it had to do with, I mean, the entire group of returns that were sent. And you, they hassled you with, down at Chesterfield or wherever you...
I had to drive there every week.
And take five more returns or whatever? Yeah, but that's done?
Yeah.
Perfect.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Harry, because you all approved that I get outside services.
You hired someone from, or you engaged someone from Lincoln?
Yeah, I was a professor who was running over there.
Yep.
And he finished up. I got my last invoice. And he finished up, I got my last invoice, it looks like to me, based on what I budgeted, I'm coming in under about a thousand dollars than what I thought it would be, so that's a good thing.
Okay, I had one other question, and doesn't maybe change any numbers, and the pauper funeral situation. Are the, are the funeral homes in Jefferson City rotating and playing their part? I mean, because it's really a civic duty that, that they do that.
When we increased, kind of like we were paying on five hundred, and I think we went up to a thousand. And that made a big difference because we had one or two that, that wouldn't do them, so it fell on.
So you go through a rotation, the next pauper funeral goes to X, and the next one goes to Y, and the next one goes to Z.
I knew, but I don't monitor that. They monitor that.
Oh, I see, okay.
They usually call me if there are.
If I add my brother, I not only pick and choose, but Freeman is a lot easier to work with, they don't demand their money right away like the others do.
Okay.
How are we doing this year? Kind of one year we were, we had so many, we had to add.
Says six hundred.
We're at six thousand, thousand right now.
I'm sorry?
And we had a lot of them then.
We're a lot higher this year than we were last year.
Yeah, we, we, one year we had, we had to add money.
Freeman turned in about four or five invoices, let's say, a month ago, and I don't know if they have any.
You must have had a bunch of them, just happened after nine thirty when you printed this up, because it was at six.
We paid half of it.
Yep.
About five in October, six in October.
Yeah, there's six right there.
Yeah.
Those are the only two funeral homes that I remember paying.
Really?
So I, I don't have a formula for predicting that.
No.
If you do, sell that list.
I'll be right there.
Well, you should become a fortune teller if you know how many pauper funerals we're gonna have.
Back, back when I first came into office in twenty fourteen, they were talking about some of these little counties, bringing their people across the county line and laying them there. That was just a rumor, I think.
And also, before I forget, I will have a new updated statewide map coming to you all about which county I have clients housed in, the total number of clients, so just an FYI that you can look at. I have my roughly two hundred plus clients, I've only got a hundred and thirty in each county, and that fluctuates, but that's what it is today.
What percent of your clients are in nursing homes?
I'd say probably forty-seven to forty-eight percent. The rest are in assisted living, residential care facilities. A couple are in DMH, like for the criminally insane. And then I have quite a few what we call host homes, or independent supported living, where clients live in private homes. And I'm getting my office is getting more and more attention from people in agencies and the community about me taking on.
Homeless, that's what I heard, yeah. Yes, I've, I've heard that, they go, the county can take over the homeless.
I feel like I'm compassionate, but I'm also.
I, yeah.
I can only do so much.
Thank you.
Anyway, Mark, did I miss anything or?
No.
Main thing was the salary, the fees, the office supplies, the vehicle, and then the equipment and service contract.
Covered it very thoroughly.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph.
I appreciate your time, by the way, and your consideration.
Thanks, Ralph.
Yeah, thank you, Ralph.
Okay, we got anything else before?
Covered them all.
By golly, let's see, we do this tomorrow?
It's an hour early, yeah.
See, we can do that tomorrow?
For a motion?
Yes, please.
When I got the call to come up early, I was thankful for that because I had a lull and so I was up walking the hallways in the courthouse with Judge Stumpy. We both had fit beds and kind of kept track of how we're doing.
Thanks for coming early, Jeff.
No problem.
Well, Greg's here and there, is a little update on the juvenile center, heating and cooling. So a while back, while Greg was gone, there were some issues with the compressor, the part got ordered. I think Greg's email's still down, we're working on that, but he wasn't privy to that information. So the compressor or the parts are in, and supposedly gonna be.
Mark's in St. Louis, sitting in the yard, he never got shipped out of the yard down to here. They're gonna drive him down here tonight, drop him off, get put in open law.
So we got, I just didn't realize I was still waiting there because we did this back in October. And that's when Jordy talked to us about it, and so then all of a sudden, we just kind of found out about it today, well, I guess with the cold spell, so.
I, you don't.
Being taken care of.
I didn't know anything about it until you.
Yep.
Just don't take care of it.
I, I didn't either till this morning, so.
Okay. Did y'all do capital already? I thought it was twelve forty-five.
Oh.
We did, and then we're gonna.
Oh, you wanna, well, you got anything you didn't wanna? I don't know, I just didn't. Should we go over it again, or?
I'm fine, I, I got all day.
Because I was gonna try to do mine, because I've got a doctor's form that I'm working on.
Okay, till one.
Oh, that's right, you want to move yours today. I was gonna, if you're following my budget, I'm giving it.
Let's do, let's keep.
Did you have anything in there that, apart from?
The only thing I had in there?
Your page, let's go straight to your budget, forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
We'll get, we'll get done earlier tomorrow.
That's all right.
We gotta come back anyway tomorrow, so I'll just get this one knocked out, will be a little bit.
Mainly salaries, right?
Basically, yeah, salaries. I want to see if we can get the starting wage up again. I know I asked for it last year. You know, I know the starting wage, minimum wage for next year is going to twelve dollars and thirty cents an hour, and my guys ain't making much more than that. What's that?
Fifteen sixty.
Yeah. So I mean, I know it's been compressed, it's been compressed since I've started here twelve years ago. I'd just like to see it get raised up, maybe to starting at eighteen dollars an hour, and I'm gonna throw this out to, it'd be up to you guys to decide whether you want to or not. And then we just start at eighteen, and then we correlate everybody else's salary with That's the biggest thing I've got. As far as line items, it's pretty well, it is what it is. I'll try to save as much money as I can across the board like I always do, but there may be some times where we have to spend a little more money than we want to also.
If you look at materials and supplies, last year you budgeted three hundred and forty-four thousand, right now you're only asking three forty-five, so it's not.
I'm hoping to keep everything the same.
Well, some of that might have been, there's probably budget adjustments in there.
Yes.
In this year's, but I guess there is a lot, yeah.
There's also, I'm sure, we haven't seen them yet, there's gonna be probably expenses for our elevator services. I know with the new EMS station, we'll have another generator to put on the contract, another elevator to put on the contract, more backflows to put on contracts. Same way with Pringer, the new Pringer Center, if that ever, wherever that's at. Just backflow testing is going up again next year, which you and I talked about, Mark, we already put that in there for the.
What's that?
Backflow testing.
Oh, okay.
For our devices. I don't know if Famerin's gonna look at a rate hike again or not. Water company, I don't know.
I think they are.
Water company, if they're looking at a rate hike, sewer, don't know if they're looking at a rate hike, either, they haven't said much. So that's, that's electric that we, utilities we can't control, so.
Sheila, you said Missouri's minimum wage goes up?
Twelve thirty, January one.
Twelve dollars?
Fifteen sixty.
I'm sorry, giving those.
Dollars and thirty cents as of one one twenty-four will be minimum. Our current starting, they confirmed this, is fifteen sixty.
Okay.
That was fifteen thirty. Fifteen thirty.
Might need to get a new schedule. I don't think the schedule I got.
Well, maybe yours isn't right. I better go to.
I'll make that a flash here request, is it?
Which would be the open one?
Because you had, yeah, where, you had three forty-one, three hundred and forty-one thousand five eighty-one. I must not have your update schedule. I better, I better get, we better get together before the final discussion.
So, hey, Mark, when, when you do that, could you do a schedule that, that starts
them at eighteen? Just, this is an idea, which is an increase of, from something to eighteen, and then whatever.
Eighteen dollars an hour?
Yes. And then.
Make that the minimum, or at least.
Well, this is just to, just to throw something on the wall and see if it sticks. And then using that, the difference between those different levels now, keep that difference going forward. This is, I'd call it the Wheeler theory, that you raise the lowest guy, you gotta raise everybody.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Impression.
Yeah.
Hate that word.
I hate it too.
You know it's coming.
I hate it too, but what else do you call it?
Yeah, I don't know what I do.
Because we sat up here for over an hour talking about all the, all the line items and, and everything.
Anyway, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it fixed by, by their budget.
Okay, so.
So that's one final decision to make. And capital, do you?
Capital, I just.
Anything we missed, or?
No, I just, I didn't know what y'all went over, just to give you some updates, like on the courthouse, the boat boilers that are in there were put in in two thousand. When we did start up this fall, we're noticing seepage between the plates and frames, which I'm not sure if this has either got a gasket or it's got a rubber O-ring in there. Once those start leaking, those units don't have very long left to live. Because you can put gaskets in, and sometimes they'll hold, sometimes they won't. Just, you know, that's the courthouse, you know, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with it. Build jail. I know we discussed that in length, I know we got a, a partial number to tear it down and to do something, a little bit with, but do we need to get that rolling again before we lose that number that we got from that company?
I think it probably expired.
Probably has.
You know, I'm.
You know, the, getting those other two lots that we talked about for more parking.
I keep talking, I keep.
I know.
I keep saying we want to buy those lots.
Yeah. Where are we at with, I'm sorry, being out on medical for three months has really put me behind the eight ball. Where are we at as far as Pringer, as far as what we've drawn up? Have we gotten land purchased?
Close.
We are very close to the closing.
Okay.
It's sitting over at Cole County Abstract, phone can ring any day now. That's gonna get done.
It's dilated.
Well, we, we've got it, yeah, yeah. The other thing is, some of us are taking a trip to Joplin to view the Joplin facility that these.
When is that?
The.
Thirteen.
Thirteenth of December.
Maybe for your budget work chance.
Maybe if possible. I'd like to go down and see what kind of mechanicals they have.
Okay.
Just to see what they're using before we get too far, something drawn up that's not gonna work very well.
Okay, that's fair.
I'd like to be more involved with our mechanical stuff for when we're building these outreaches, our data centers and conference rooms and new EMS stations, and I'd like to be, so we're not putting something in, in five years we have to replace it.
Okay, sure.
That's kind of depending on the architects to help us with. I'm fine with you going down there and taking a look at it, that's fine, but I'm really gonna depend on them. I mean, as Tommy Boy used to say, you know, you can get a good look at T-bone by.
Yeah.
Shoving your head up the backside of a cow, but I'm gonna trust my butcher to tell me, so I don't care if you put that in the paper. I probably didn't quote it the exact right way, but I just, if you want to take a look at it and know what you're getting into, it, it's not gonna hurt. Because we may be changing other stuff on some of our other buildings at some point too.
Right.
How many openings, how many position openings do we have right now?
None is right now, but last year we, when this all started, my regulation was, one was gonna leave, or I wasn't gonna lose anybody, they were supposed to hire somebody over there, but the position that Gerard was in when he retired was never filled, but they put an individual over at the sheriff's department, out of mind. Like today, we had two people out again today, and with the small staffs we got, it hurts.
But you always had one person over there at the sheriff's department anyway, so the one that he basically is paying for is basically there as a janitor, so. So you don't, you didn't really lose anybody, they're still doing their stuff over there.
Well, I did because that person, when if I had, like today, if I had two people out, I would pull that person from the sheriff's department and send them to another building. Because the sheriff building can be cleaned any time of the day.
You do have two people over there, you can still pull one from over there.
I did, I pulled one individual out today.
I know, that's what I'm saying, you can still pull one person, you almost have to have somebody over there full time.
Yes.
Because they're always pulling socks or underwear out of the toilets or something for them guys. So I just, where I was going with it is I'd, I'd still like to look at bidding out, snow removal, lawn care, and stuff like that. Those guys, they come in, they just knock things out, they're set up to do it. We are always dealing with overtime, you gotta stretch your guys thin the way it is. I think it's something that needs to be looked at, possibly even some janitorial stuff because we're doing that at Public Works, and they've been extremely happy with that. And then let our guys do actual maintenance stuff. And I'm fine paying them to do maintenance stuff.
I'm all for it.
So if we can have them doing repairs in the courtroom, I mean, they're, they're at our beck and call, you know, the judge says, hey, stuff's falling on my head, if we go look at it.
I'm all for it.
And so I, that's why I'd like to, look, I don't want to get down into weeds that far with it today, but I think it's something that we need to look at doing.
If you want to hire somebody for snow removal, grass mowing, whatever, go for it.
I mean, it's during the summer, you got guys out there doing that for half a full day, and you, you lose them for doing everything else. So you get behind there too. And then same with the winter. So some toss around. I didn't mean to run the party.
Anything else on the list you wanted to?
No.
Talk about.
No, that was the biggest thing, as far as supplies and costs, it's, it's gonna be what it's gonna be. They're doing drug testing over at my building now, still doing it there, on an average of fifty to sixty people every time they do it, twice a week. So I'm, I have been using more supplies over.
That's not a real location.
No.
That's just temporary though, right?
Don't know.
Been doing it for.
Been doing it since April now.
Sheriff was doing it before.
Yeah, but I thought that was while that construction was going on or something.
He hosted for a while, and then it got to be so disruptive and so burdensome to have it in there, but.
I heard he did not.
He said no.
That his.
But that's why Greg ended up with it, I think.
Okay, so now supposedly it's a permanent thing at Adams Street.
I guess.
Okay, I did not realize that.
Probably need to talk to the judge.
Not really gonna say nothing for that.
Maybe a little different too, we could get some petitions and put them up there.
Got all those tools and stuff.
Well, if they're just some pre-tar out, pre-tar should be monitored or something like that maybe, since somebody, staff has to be present to secure the building and everything.
Do we have alarms over there?
Cameras.
Yeah.
Cameras, quite a few cameras over there.
Yeah, most of them are on the outside, yeah, there's two on the inside.
Oh, we got some, yeah, they're around.
I know.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's about it.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn and stand in recess until four thirty?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Yeah, it's all right. It's been quiet, I mean, had a boiler blow up this morning.
Yep, we'll have friends and family down at Lake trying to kill something. I got my ten pointers, so now you can't get any crap about missing the other one.
Do we shut this off?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just shut yours down, and then I just turned the TV on.
Recorder?
Yes.
Cause I think what I'm saying was being recorded still.
Yeah, yes, that's why, it's, it's how nice the commission is, and we're wonderful to work with.
Absolutely.
And, uh.
Totally agree. No, it's going stir, going well. Thanks, Eric.
I gotta give her this stuff, too.
They're just doing that work, they got that parking bit stuck up in St. Louis, they just, nobody was calling them, and they didn't think about it either.
I don't know. It's a long, it's a long me off, I have to log off.